But there are a few other recommendations that we can make at this time. And one of them is, again, seeking more input from the business community. Again, we're willing to facilitate. We get a lot of people, businesses, coming to us with a lot of frustrations. And it would be, I think, useful and helpful for the city to be able to hear from those people.
How are your membership numbers? Are you going in the right direction there through you, Chair?
Membership was falling up until a couple of years ago. It has steadied, and that has been a victory for us because so many of our colleagues across the country, other institutions across the country, are facing relevancy issues in the 21st century. And just actually in the last year, in 2015, has been a really great year. I would say the membership is up to about 1,050. It was about 1,000 when I started.
Congratulations on that. I personally look forward to my participation in some small level, I guess, with the Economic Summit. I guess I'm working with Rick Raven. The topic is intensification. I'm probably stage C or D during the day, but it's always an enlightening day or half day with the Economic Summit. And I appreciate the theme of bringing the region together this year. Again, congratulations on your membership success, your marketing abilities, and your relevance and your increasing importance in our community as it relates to all things business. And you're doing a great job, Keenan. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Depp. Good to see you again, Keenan. Keenan, on the LRT, can I, and if it's already been done and I've missed it, if you could just forward it to me, that'd be great. Haven't asked of you, but of your predecessors, during the time of all the debate the last several years, I've asked about the feedback officially, not just through the BIAs taking a position, if you will, from their executive or whatever. But I've asked for along the B-line corridor, that's still the preferred line if we ever build LRT. I've asked for through the chamber officially, some questionnaire, some survey of your businesses that are registered with you, Keenan, along the corridor of King-Queenston Road, from McMaster to East Gate, so that I would have some idea as to their support, strong, soft, unsure, opposed. I've never really had that survey result officially through the chamber now if it's been done. And you just need to dust it off for me and send it to me. Mr. Depp, may I be through to Keenan for a comment, please? If I missed it, I apologize. But if not, is it something possibly you could work on, please?
Mr. Loomis?
Yes, I'm not aware of that having happened yet, so I'm assuming that it has not yet happened. But it is a great idea and something that we should definitely endeavor to do. So, the LRT Task Force, as you know, actually is comprised of three representatives of council and many other key leaders within the community. The LRT Task Force is coming together again very soon to meet, and I think that that would be a great endeavor for that task force to embark upon.
Thanks, Keenan. And again, with the various BIAs, the international downtown, they represent a certain segment, but obviously there's businesses far surpassing that geographic area, right to East Gate, right all the way to McMaster. And so, thank you for that acknowledgement. And I'll just leave that with you as a possible mission that possibly could be accomplished and give us some greater ideas to the support along that corridor, especially from those that the LRT effort was to materialize. Would see a fair bit of disruption, and again, possible short-term pain for long-term gain, whatever it might be. Secondly, on your investing in a shared future, I encourage Mr. Deputy Mayor to see this. I'll rhyme off quickly for you, Keenan. What I feel we and Burlington/Halton have in common so much of, and I've said this in past years, and I'll get to my question too, Royal Botanical Gardens, Trails, Hamilton-Burlington United Way, Hamilton-Burlington SPCA, Hamilton-Burlington Realtors Association, Hamilton-Halton Home Builders Association, Waterfront, many people working in Burlington over the years, many people working in Hamilton over the years, living in Burlington, and now a little bit of vice-versa. My point where I try to suggest and encourage with all these already mutually beneficial agencies and programs and services that we have across the border between our two great municipalities, I've always tried to encourage some official dialogue, some type of shared future vision that would economically benefit both communities. And it seems like we kind of start the motor and a few conversations, a few informal meetings occur between mayors, deputy mayors, whatever, a little task force starts up and it thistles away. Mr. Depp, may I be through to Keenan, maybe for a comment as to how this might be different?
Mr. Loomis?
Excellent. Great question. Thank you. All of those groups that you mentioned are involved in this summit, so that's a great place to start. That's where we started, because, again, those entities have demonstrated success in cross-border collaboration for a long time, so they can show us the way going forward. The intention, first of all, is, except for those institutions, on so many other levels, there isn't a lot of coordination. So, our first goal is, number one, obviously, to make sure that people are able to identify their counterpart on the other side, that we're able to talk about some of the shared issues and how we might be able to work together. So, we're hoping that this instigates a lot of that conversation. Number two, both of the economic development departments--
--to make a submission such as that at the federal level. So, that's the intention going forward, and how much more we can squeeze out of one day, that remains to be seen, but I appreciate that.
Tremendous answer, Keenan. So, my concluding caution, Mr. Deputy Mayor, may be more political. I've always felt the Bay Area governments, i.e. Burlington, Hamilton, and since our amalgamated city, have a lot more in common between us, again, given all the historic associations that we have. My political caution and worry is Burlington still is tugged towards the Halton region. It's still officially part of Halton region, and for some reason, still seem politically more attachment to Halton versus what I see are greater opportunities in the Bay Area. But I'll leave that with you and wish you good luck on June 2nd. I'm trying to free up my calendar to be there.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
If I may just comment on that, you know, the Hamilton story is getting out, and everywhere I go, people are talking about the, hearing the Hamilton story. I was just at the OCC annual meeting in Cornwall this past weekend, and people from as far away as Thunder Bay and from other provinces are hearing about what's going on in Hamilton, and everybody asks me, "So, what's going on in Hamilton?" So, and what I get from my colleagues in Niagara, in Branford, in Guelph, in Burlington, in Cambridge, they want to be a part of the Hamilton conversation now going forward. So, there is much more of a draw than there ever has been in the city. People want to be a part of the buzz and what's happening here, and so it was fairly easy, actually, to encourage Burlington to be involved in this endeavor. And we have an opportunity perhaps next year, though at this point, if you ask me, if I'd ever do another summit again, I would say no. But we have an opportunity to do a similar exercise with Niagara into the future. We have an opportunity to expand into the Peel region as well and talk about Hamilton in those even broader regional contexts. People are hearing the Hamilton story, and they want to be involved in some way, and we certainly don't want to shut them out. So, this was our first attempt. This is kind of a bite-sized step to talking about Hamilton in a more regional context.
Keenan, that's a great capturing and summary, and it sounds like, from your standpoint, timing is ripe, and the poker is hot, and I wish you nothing but success, because I think the opportunities are limitless for the Bay Area. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, just to follow on that topic, Keenan, good work. Sorry. It's allergy season. I don't know who is affected by that, but I certainly am. So, good work on kind of looking at the chamber and trying to bring in new membership. I think I see a lot of new, which I think is really positive and kind of the direction that the chamber needs to go, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
But to follow on Counselor Jackson's point, a great idea to have a summit with Burlington, and certainly, clearly, the relationship between Burlington has always been strong. There have been issues from time to time, and certainly, we share a bay, and that's been a kind of resounding issue over the years. But our affinity also towards Niagara is, in my view, getting stronger and needs to be reinforced. So, spending a terrific time with the regional chair out there to kind of talk about a similar client of alliance with Niagara, just kind of recognizing the regional economy. We're kind of in the middle of that hub, so there's a real need, I think, to start looking at Niagara as a greater kind of go-forward partner as well, that really starts to look at the east of Hamilton as a fairly significant regional economy that is going to make a difference in the province. And it's actually a future investment opportunity for the province of Ontario as well, so there's really a lot of work that I think needs to be done. So, I'm actually making some inroads with the regional chair in Niagara, and I would equally encourage that we set up as some sort of a liaison committee with Niagara as a region. I think that's a wise step on our part, and certainly, having the chamber engage in that as well with the economic development engines out there, I think, would be a very positive step as well. So, I really applaud the work we're doing with Burlington. You know what? The relationship with Burlington is always kind of founded on the commitment level in terms of leadership and making sure that we can contain and maintain the momentum. And so, both Mayor Golding and I have made sure that we are going to make sure that these meetings continue and that we have issues that come to the table, that we're able to deal with them, and that we look for resolve in some of the issues. And some of those issues will come up before too long, but I think what the chamber's doing in terms of adding some glue to all of this, I think, is very positive, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, Deputy--
Sure. Mr. Loomis?
I would say that the conversation shouldn't even stop at Niagara. It should include Buffalo and beyond as well. I was actually just at the Niagara Chamber President's Dinner a couple of weeks ago, and I was sitting next to both the new Niagara, the Greater Niagara Chamber of Commerce CEO, but also the CEO from the Greater Buffalo-Niagara Partnership, so their chamber equivalent. And Buffalo is turning its gaze to Canada, specifically to the GTA market. There's a lot of great things happening in Buffalo, and I know that we're doing a lot in foreign direct investment and all of that, and I know that people are saying that we're over-reliant on trade to the U.S., but I actually believe that we haven't really truly cultivated significant ties, and Buffalo would be a great example. I mean, it's right there. It shares so much history with Hamilton, and yet, we really don't have much cohesion among the leadership. So, I think that represents a great opportunity as well.
Thank you. We have on the first-time speakers list Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and Keenan, thanks for coming in and sharing a chamber update with us. I was going to thank Counselor Partridge, whose original idea last term was to create the Bay Area Subcommittee. And it was through that committee, our last meeting last term, that I put the motion to suggest that we have both chambers present at this year's summit. So, I'm glad to see that things have progressed and you have a terrific agenda here, but there is one thing missing, and I wondered what the chamber is doing in this regard, and that's in relation to the Stelco situation. And as you know, the city is undertaking a Bayfront Strategy this year that will look at the future, not just of the Stelco lands, but the entire industrial area and where Hamilton goes with some planning standards and other issues related to that, essentially a visioning, a long-term vision for that area of the city that still has, in many respects, a land use planning document in place that dates from the 1950s. What's the chamber doing in that regard? And I guess the other question I would have is, it's almost an open invitation for the chamber to be an active participant in those discussions that'll take place through the 2015 calendar year.
Great. Thank you. Well, so, waterfront revitalization is within the agenda here, undertaken and captained by the Bay Area Restoration Council. One of the things we wanted to do was really spend a lot of time on those issues that we both share. And Burlington was less interested in talking about the industrial parts of Hamilton, but it's certainly something that needs to be a part of the conversation, certainly through the economic development departments. Again, our input through there will help inform their strategies, so that will be, I'm sure, I know that that will be part of the conversation. And then, just the last thing I would say is that anything that you want us to be a part of, we would love to be a part of. So, please invite us to all of those committee meetings, and we'll provide leadership where we can.
Perfect. Thanks for that. Thanks, Keenan. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, would you take the chair for a moment? Select him. Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Loomis. I know we've been having a great conversation regionally about forming partnerships. I'm actually more interested on the local perspective. At the recent Pan Am Committee, we had a presentation that outlaid some of the advantages or opportunities that we have. It was, I think, a Deloitte, from a Deloitte report. And I'm wondering if, through your organization, you might be able to provide myself and my councilor colleagues kind of ward-specific opportunities? I know in my ward, in particular, Ward Three, they're looking for business directories. There's an increasing, I think, refocus on shopping locally, and so I'd be very interested in finding out, you know, between our economic development department here and the chamber, what businesses are in operation in Ward Three, as well as any strategic conversations that are being had regarding opportunities there, so that when I'm in conversation with people, I can highlight certain brownfields or certain businesses or certain clusters or agglomeration or whatever opportunities that we can highlight. So, just something to take back, if there is a report that is ward-specific, I know for myself as a new councillor, I would love to see it, and I'd love to combine it with anything that we have at Act Dev. So, just kind of focusing a little bit more hyper-local from my own perspective and hope that you might be able to provide some assistance that way.
I agree with that. I think that it's important. One of the things I've always wanted to do was create a shop-local, support-local campaign. We have 1,000 members in the chamber, 1,050. There are approximately 10,000 businesses in this community, so we represent a good, significant chunk of that, but we can obviously do better. We do do a lot of area-specific work associated with our Ann Castor, Dundas, and Glenbrook divisions, but if there's anything that you want us to work on specifically within your wards, we'd be happy to do so. I know Counselor Whitehead and I talked about Upper James and some of the things that we need to do there. I think that's a great idea, so we're on board. I don't want to stretch our organization too thin, but we're doing everything we can on both a hyper-level and a regional level to make things happen.
It just seems like in that conversation, in that relationship, there's certainly an opportunity for businesses smaller, but, you know, I always talk about the small, small-ass business, having to get to know a little bit more about your organization. I know in the past, it seemed like it was an organization that particularly was for large corporations, but as you know, the Canadian economy is being driven by small businesses, and so there's a huge opportunity there. So, perhaps it could also help improve your membership. So, just a thought, and certainly look forward to working with you in the future. We have exhausted our first-time speakers list, provided that nobody else wants to join that list. Oops, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have the chair back. Point of protocol. On the second-time speakers list, we have Counselor Whitehead.
Keenan, I mean, you've been very accessible as an individual, and you can have a very constructive dialogue, and whether you agree or disagree, it's really respectful kind of conversation. Those are the kind of conversations that need to take place. So, I need to highlight the person, and I want to do that, which I didn't do earlier. And I want to thank you for continuing, keeping our feet to the fire, but continue working and looking for those partnerships. The other thing I want to highlight is that the Chamber of Commerce is just one entity of a larger entity, and you have, I believe, a provincial body and you have a national body, and we really haven't talked about strategically how we could utilize that reach of the chamber to implement changes federally that impact on municipalities. So, I think there's a tool there that we should strategize around in regards to needs from, in the context of, we've got the Federation of Canadian Municipalities that do that on behalf of municipalities, but we really haven't exercised that reach we have through the chamber in a very, you know, was we're optimizing that relationship. I know the only time I can remember doing it is when we pushed for the Southern Ontario Development Creation, sorry, the Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario. And when I initiated that, I did work through the chamber, and that did go all the way up to the National Chamber, FCM, and so forth, and now we have the creation of the Southern Ontario Economic Development. But just one example we can do, when there's got that, not only that collaboration, but those networks that could facilitate that type of lobbying to the appropriate bodies. The other piece I want to identify is that at FCM, I talked about creating, having a discussion economically, and I'd like to see the chamber have some input with the FCM on this as well. There is what I call organized chaos in sectorial development across this country. Eighty percent of the population, as we know, is locating to larger urban centers. We know that economies aren't developing city-specific. So, back to the broader discussion of the Bay and Niagara, absolutely right. But the question is, how can we, through the federal government, through funding, research, incentives, and so forth, develop the proper sectoral development within those metro economies so that we're not necessarily competing with each other, but we're optimizing the resources that we have to attract the type of businesses and employment in our communities? And that's the kind of discussion I think needs to take place going forward. So, again, thank you very much.
You're absolutely right. Through the Ontario Chamber of Commerce and the Canadian Chamber of Commerce, we, as a community, are connected into two incredible networks that provide a lot of leadership, both in Toronto and in Ottawa, and we're connected continentally through the Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives, a U.S. body, and then internationally as well. There's an International Chamber of Commerce. So, it's incredible, the number of OCC and CCC issues that mirror a lot of the prerogatives on both AMO and FCM. And absolutely, I think that it would be important for those organizations to work together on both of those levels to strengthen. And so, through our participation on the Government Relations Committee here of council, I know that you're on that, the mayor, and also chaired by Counselor Partridge, I would love to be able to share some of what we can do through those networks and how we might be able to strengthen the priorities of Hamilton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loomis, as always. Some fantastic points brought about by your presentation. May I please have a motion to receive the presentation? Moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by, actually, quick to the draw, Counselor Pearson. She beat you, Doug, just by a little bit there. All those in favor? Carried any opposed? Okay. I feel like we need buzzers, like fast, get in there. That'd be great. Next up, item 6.2, we have Mr. Jamie Rume, Chair of the Golden Horseshoe Food and Farming Alliance, respecting an update regarding the Golden Horseshoe Food and Farming Alliance for May 6, 2015 meeting. I'd like to call upon Mr. Jamie Rume.
I don't know how to use this. No glare? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here. I understand I'm here to catch you up on your time, so I'll do just that. My name is Jamie Rome. I'm the Chair of the Golden Horseshoe Food and Farming Alliance, I'm the Chair of the Ontario Food Terminal Board, I'm also the CEO of Country Heritage Park. Been involved in food and farming for 20-plus years, close to it, but I am a city-ate. I need to qualify that. I'm not a farmer. I'm a businessperson. I'm here to talk about what we do best. Before I do that, though, I do want to acknowledge, and Joanne is there, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that sit from Hamilton on the alliance. Joanne and Brian is not here. Counselor Pasuta, which I'm not used to ever saying those words, Counselor Pasuta. We sit on the alliance. Your colleague from the chamber had already issued the call for working together. If I can get this to work, there we go. As you can see, the Golden Horseshoe represents about 5.6 to 6.1 million people. We have representatives from Durham, York, Peel, Halton, Hamilton, Niagara, Toronto. We work already doing that, 73 different writings politically, federally and provincially. We are, in essence, an alliance sector-specific in answer to Counselor Whitehead's comments about how the sectors are looking, because quite frankly, we're about numbers. We're about economics. We have economic development, we have planners working with us. We're about commonalities between these areas, not about competition. We're about making a difference, because in the last recession, the only area that actually went up during the economic downturn was food and farming. We're the only ones that saw an increase along the way, but that's ignored because, Deputy Mayor, you mentioned it yourself, everybody looks at the big companies. And the big companies are hard-hit. One factory is always viewed as something when you can get 3,000 jobs there. I look at 3,000 farms hiring 10 people and saying there's 30,000 people. That's economics. That's what drives it. It's about looking at the food side of things. You have Maple Leaf inside your own area. You have probably the second-largest food cluster in the second-largest food cluster in North America, which is what the GTA is. But we have to start thinking beyond the ideas of regionalizing on it. We need to start working together on this. Our planners are looking at these perspectives of commonalities of languages. Growing the cluster implies moving forward with an idea that food and farming is something that's vitally important. It just doesn't need to be local. We keep talking about investment opportunities, but we also look at the fact that Canadians and Americans, the most integral trade that takes place between our borders is not automotive, but instead, it is food. Linking food, farming, and health together, this is vitally important. As an individual who deals with politics, and I'm not one that does this a lot, I kind of chuckle about it, but I deal with more than 20 provincial ministries and about 15 federal ministries, and I deal with the upper levels. So, I deal with the McMeekins of the world, I deal with a bunch of the other guys that are out there, I deal with the premier. I know I'm going to lose farming issues every single time I'm out now, because I have an urbanized-centric government that looks at stuff, but I will win every food issue that's out there. And food is what's going to drive the consumers to come back to where we're looking at. It's going to be about how we link it up. It's about cutting taxes because we're eating better. It's about looking at what the realities are. That's what the vital importance is. It's about education. Fostering innovation. Innovation is part of what I look at, 100 years' worth of innovation, and I'm actually CEO at the places, is the farming side of the innovation we do. It's remarkable, but the thing is, is that you guys are frontrunners. Maple Leaf is one of the most innovative plants in the entire country. It is streamlined and efficient. It is abilities to working with the municipality in order to come in with the best perspective for it. Congratulations. That showed a great functionality between a municipality, a city, and a company that was looking to be able to do something better. Oftentimes, what we're finding in the economic side of what we deal with is there are too many barriers that are put up. There are too many times that you're waiting on building plans, alternatives. As the Chair at the Ontario Food Terminal Board, I can tell you I waited nine months because the plans for the city of Etobicoke got shifted to the overall region of Toronto and the city along there, and it was over two inches difference. That sucks. Enabling the cluster, obviously, what we have to do is we have to talk to politicians. We have to go forward and do this. We have Queen's Park Days. I was hoping for a better representation, but in the future, I can tell you this, I had 91 members come out for the Queen's Park Days. We are very popular. Some of us actually have to engage this, and we did one in November, and we had a lot of people come, because we showcased the economics and the strength of the region in the area. If you look provincially, most of the changes that are going to happen are going to be within the Golden Horseshoe. That is just election strategy. That's how people view things. Regardless of your color or your spectrum, you're watching as people shift. The horseshoe, as it was mentioned before, is probably one of those ones that strengthen numbers. We need to follow through with that. We need the commonality of the languages, though. That's where the economics and our planning sides come in. Why should one planning area have differences? We should be universally working towards this, and it's not just about AMO, it's about Roma, it's about having all of the compounds, the compartments, the principles involved in this. Which is cultivating new approaches. We all talk about being able to talk with people. I sit at a table that has research innovation. I sit with people from Vineland, the presidents. I sit with councillors and mayors. I sit with these planners and developers and the economic strength that is shown because they sit at the table with us. We're able to have these conversations because they want to be there. They know that we're, you know, an integral part of the economics. It's just, we're not viewed like that. It's too small, sectorally speaking. It's one business, one business, one business. So, we believe that numbers matter. Oh, we didn't get the farms in there. I'm sorry about that. That was my fault. On the last instances, and this is part of what we're getting to, because this is where the hilarity starts. You have approximately 1,900 farms in the Hamilton area. Each of those farms has approximately, and it's not contributed, this is funny, did you get a different one, Stephanie? Stephanie? Yeah, don't worry. I'm just wondering if you got the different one. My apologies. It's the same one? You have the same one? Oh, you have a different one. Good. Brian gave you the right one and gave me the wrong electrical. My apologies. No, that's... Eight hundred and eighty-five. No, see, there's the difference is that you're going to have to look at farm memberships. You do have about 1,900 all the way through on the areas and the outlined sides. The numbers, however, are shrinking. You're seeing an increase in smaller farms. You're seeing an increase in the larger farms, and the middle ones are going. People are just simply buying up or they're getting out of it. I do like the fact that there's 245 million in gross farm receipts, but these are dollars that we've worked hard over the last two years to find. Every area has been done like this. We've started to look at what the dollars and cents and how it makes sense to the people there. Most importantly is the impact. It's nearly a billion. That's a huge number. That's a lot of zeros that follow in behind it. For years, it says, and this is almost a farming link, it's 55700 jobs. The reality is, that's faulty data. We've been working on a project to enable, to improve the data collection. At one point, when we were looking at, here we are, when we were looking at Peel, they had zero chicken farmers. When we looked at Niagara, they had 11 chicken farmers. I can tell you right now that Peel has about 111 to 115 chicken farmers, but Niagara is the second-largest area for chicken production, and that's a problem. When your data is flawed because of the federal system and how the province looks at it, it is flawed. So what we've done is we've done the asset mapping. I'm sure many of you are aware of asset mapping. However, what we're doing is we're trying to map economics with what's there and where the gaps are. The gap is, is that if you're in the city of Hamilton directly and you're a farmer and you're trying to find a part for John Deere, you can't. You have to go somewhere else. You have to go to Halton. You have to go to Waterloo. You have to go to anywhere else to find the pieces. We're just trying to fill in the gaps. Some of the other issues, we've done workshops with municipal planners and economic development to highlight some of the new projects going through, but in addition, some of the new legislation. It's not just going to be the Ford Growth Plan. It's not the growth plan for the Golden Horseshoe or the Green Belt. It's the municipal act that impacts its development fees and charges that are being changed. It's the Great Lakes Protection Act, which is going to be something that you're going to have to deal with when you discuss your Bay Coalition or your Bay Cooperation. The Great Lakes Protection Act and the Great Lakes Protection Plan, as an individual lived through the Lake Simcoe one, means that it's going to cover off all of the property out here. Everything. In fact, it covers 99.83% of all the lands in Ontario that you can farm. It's a very simple act, but it says it usurps everything else around there. Just bear that in mind when you're doing, you're planning on stuff because water will be paramount in the next decade. I did mention the Queens Park Day. We do have the collaborative model coming, and we're building local food aspects. So the one thing that I do want to stress is the collaborative model. We continue to stress that. We don't sit at a table and argue about who took what or where jobs went. We don't discuss any of the, what I would call the minutia. We discuss the hierarchy of what we need to do. We push forward with economics. We push forward with municipal changes. When we've done the responses, and we're doing one, by the way, for a federal platform, the responses are universal. Hamilton's input is inside everything that we do. Toronto's input is inside everything we do. And the regions, on a large scale, are giving us back that input to be able to have one voice that speaks solidly to the needs of the citizens within the horseshoe. Positively, something that needs to be going forward. We've been cited several times by both the premier and the province and a few of the ministries as examples of what needs to be done. We've set aside our petty differences, and we've come to the table with one focus, which is to improve a lot of the food and farming sector. See how I skipped over the urban agriculture side there, Joanne? Agriculture is agriculture in my world, urban or otherwise. We are working together to do this. Again, I do want to thank the city of Hamilton. You guys have contributed. The entire city has. You've had people at the table. I can't thank you enough for the expertise that you put at the table. Between Joanne and Brian, it's wonderful to have, but as well councillor Pesuda, as much as I can make fun of him at our table, the fact is, is that he brings a strength to the table from the city perspective. And that's a very important thing when we're talking about what the Golden Horseshoe implies. At one point, Hamilton was not there, and neither was Niagara. We all sit at the table now. Thank you.
I think I almost touched on time. Thank you very much, Mr. Rioum. We have on our first-time speakers list councillor Johnson.
Thank you. And Jamie, thanks for the presentation. I also wanted to extend my thank yous to Joanne and Brian and councillor Rob for all their efforts as well. We know that we're in good hands, being in there. I just wanted you to go back to, if you can maneuver this backwards, if you can take it back to the agricultural statistics. There we go. Even though it's not up there, you said that 1,900 farms within the city of Hamilton, although you do acknowledge...
Amalgamated.
You do acknowledge that the figures are a little bit skewed. You don't feel that they're real accurate, correct?
If I was to be completely honest with you, yeah, the numbers are not accurate because there are three different levels of information that are provided about farms. You either go to the feds and StatsCan, which is, no offense, kind of a joke. Sorry for any of the federal people here.
Kind of a joke's good. Go ahead.
The province and its official bodies, the OFA, or general farm organizations, which in order to be a farmer, you're qualified for farmer as one simple thing. You can, you have a gross annual revenue of $7,000, and that qualifies you as a farmer. That's pretty gross in itself, but these are the realities we deal with. So if you have a farm business registration number, you're a farmer. Some of the things that we don't look at is how we transition across with what people talk about when they say community gardening or when they look at the social aspect of what's important to it. We look at the big aspects of it, but there is a social component to what we do. And we can't ignore that social component. And for what we do at the alliance, it's the community side, the social gardening, the, all of the aspects of educating somebody about where their food is and where it comes from is the link with health. It's not ever going to feed people, but what it will do is help them understand the cycle that goes through. And that's vitally important with what we do.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. When you did state that there was approximately 1,900 farms, you did say that they're getting smaller. The amount is getting smaller. Could I suggest maybe it's because we're getting corporate farming coming in. Mr. Barlow yesterday bought a farmland across the road from him and consolidated that farm with his farm. So it doesn't mean that there's one less farm. It just means one bigger farm.
No, it means there's not less acreage. It's just a larger operation.
So, okay. On that point, thank you. Would you suggest that the acreage of the farming has stayed the same, or would you suggest that it has gone down drastically?
Drastic reductions.
Drastic reductions.
Yeah. When you lose 100,000 acres of prime land, and let's be honest here, classes one to four are prime agricultural land. You can grow food on it. Classes five to eight, you get good rock reduction and some sheep and pasture lands. But the reality is, is that if you're looking for any kind of change or seasonality to it, classes one to four land have disappeared. But we've done that to ourselves as a society. We have literally expanded on the best lands, and we've done it for 200 years. This is just a cycle and a pattern that's there. When I worked up in the Holland Marsh, I can honestly assure you that 19,000 acres of class one and two land were taken out of production. Instead of going to Cornwall, which is the 401 corridor, which is, and we discussed 80% of whatever, but, you know, that's classes five to eight lands. They went up through Simcoe to Berry and then took out 19,000 acres, simply because that's the convenient route that they're going to look at. And that's where their growth plan is set.
And I think that comes down to the green belt. Although it protects the agriculture, we need to protect the farmer. So I hear you 100%. The gross farm receipts that you've got down is 244,217,225 dollars. Is that including vets? Is that including the tractor dealerships?
No.
Is that including seed and grain packaging, the processing? So would it be fair to say that this number is just the base, that we've, all the contributors, all the accessories to farming could be? How much more would you say?
I will help you with this one. We bemoaned the loss of the Heinz plant and the 780 jobs that were gone. Unfortunately, what people have forgotten in this province is that Heinz was an employer directly related to 1 in 7 jobs in Leamington. It wasn't just the 780 people that were let go from the plant. It wasn't just the 500 farmers. The first people given pink slips in Leamington were not any of the employees. It was the people that made labeling. It was 14 employees that made the labels for them that were no longer required. And all 14 of them were given that when it was announced that it was no longer coming. Agriculture directly relates to about 1 in 6 jobs to 1 in 7 jobs. And the impact is huge. It's not just trucking and everything else. It's all the way down the road. I work at the Ontario Food Terminal. I have a $15 million budget for, to operate a 37-acre property, and quite frankly, it's a billion-dollar industry. There's a billion dollars goes in and out of the terminal every year. We do about 200 million pounds of food every year. That's a phenomenal amount when you think about it.
Absolutely.
But directly related, there's probably 10,000 jobs. Indirectly related, I can tell you there's 100,000 jobs. We are an economic hub.
Thank you.
People forget that.
Yep. Thank you. And I think that anybody, if we can put it back to terms that people would understand, whenever one of the steel, well, when the steel mill went on strike, it was like the entire city stopped because it was just, my husband's on strike, therefore we didn't go to the theater. We didn't go to the mall. So I totally understand that. The Great Lakes Protection Act, you said covers 99.8% of the farms. Can you expand on that just a little bit? Because when we're looking at planning and we're looking at economics, that's one section I don't think I have personally heard for a long, long time.
I thought I was going to get you on time here. Sorry about this. The Great Lakes Protection Act is, it covers every tributary, every open water, every surface, everything related within 300 miles of the Great Lakes. There is a part in Tomescobe that is not covered. It's not covered for James Bay and the, what I would call some of the turf up there. But the second-largest group of landowners outside of the province and the municipalities happens to be farmers. And they are all going to be subject to this piece of legislation. And it is, we need to look at quite seriously, because I think it's in the second or third paragraph, and I can't remember which one. It states that this act takes precedent over every other, in my words, it usurps. The ministry didn't like my word, but that's the real reality. I don't blame them for trying to protect water. However, we're not California. Our issue is going to be that we're 22% of the fresh water in the entire world. At some point, people are going to take notice of that. At some point, they're going to take notice of the vast resources we have in this province. And more to the point, at some point, they're going to take notice of the vast resources we have in this area collectively. We have to look at the province as a whole, which is where the regional standpoint comes from. And that's why we have positions on federal papers. That's why we have positions on provincial elections for the same issues. We had to take a much broader stance at what's there. The Great Lakes Protection Act, having seen it, is similar to the Lake Simcoe Protection Act. The one thing that councils need to be aware of, and I really stress this, is the council of guardians that takes over is usually, right and wrong, very heavy on the environmental side. Environmental doesn't tend to look at economics as well as what we do normally.
No. And I guess saying that, I believe that good farmers are good stewards of the land. So...
Always have been.
Yes, absolutely. Anyways, thank you for your time, Jamie. And I know you were trying to be brief, but this is, in my opinion, a very important part of our city, and I think it needed to be highlighted. So I really appreciate you coming in. Again, Joanne and Brian and Rob, thanks for all your hard work.
If I may just add one brief note. I was asked once at a presentation through the city of council by a former mayor, and these are his exact words, "What the hell food has to do with my constituents?" And I said, "You think anybody eats?" And that pretty much ends any conversation when you have this. If your constituents eat, that's what it is. And we are there to help out. Our industry is strong, but we're also providing jobs and opportunities and careers that are as diverse as everybody. We had GPS and hands-free driving a decade before it was even common knowledge out there in the general public. We have tractors that drive hands-free for literally hundreds of feet. You just have to go in, knock the tractor, and then it asks whether you're dead or not, and then it stops or veers to the right. But then it continues on. That's hands-free driving. That's what they're trying to develop for forward. We have all the technology. We are cutting-edge. We were using drones well in advance of anybody else out there except for the military. Well, we got kind of caught by that one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rioum. Certainly, one of the advantages of having councillor Pesuda is we never forget how important farming is. So up next, we have councillor Pesuda.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Green. And Jamie, welcome, and thank you for being so kind here today in front of everybody. Jamie chairs a mean meeting, but he keeps everybody in line. But, you know, I got to know Jamie years ago, and this man here, if anybody wants to get in to see an MP or an MPP, he has a way of doing it. And agriculture very well. You were on the Holland Marsh Growers Association. You were the Chair of that?
I was the executive director. I just ran it.
Director. And I can tell you through the work he's done down there, the people I know in the Holland Marsh, he's promoted Holland Marsh and did amazing work with the growers there. And of course, he's our Chair of the Golden Horseshoe Food and Farming Alliance, doing a great job once again in getting into Queens Park and promoting agriculture. Also working, as they said, with Joanne Hickey Evans and Brian Morris and the working group they're working with. And I know we've had our meetings, a few getting together, and just going to go some more to the workshops. And I know some of our planners took a beating at some of the workshops because agriculture does have issues as far as planning issues and building department issues moving forward on it. Deputy Mayor, as I said to staff here too, and Jamie, you know, as I said at our meetings, how difficult is it at times for farmers, agriculture businesses, to get through planning issues and permits? The fact that farmers don't sometimes plan for years down the road when they make a decision to put a building up or change something on their property. It could be within months that they need to do something. And we can't wait because the food, the produce we have will go bad, and we have to have places to store it and places to process it. So through your work and the work of the committee, I think we're moving forward and getting the message through to planning and building departments and all the municipalities. I guess I'm looking for you to comment. Where do you see the future of food going? I'm reading the paper about China and how they're going to be, are going to be the second-largest wine producer in the world eventually. It's coming down the road. Are we going to lose our status as a food producer or wine producer here in the GTA Niagara region? Are we losing something? What does the government need to do to help us promote and keep agriculture alive? Because we do need healthy food to eat here. Can you comment on what we need to do and how we can, how we can, as a government, can enforce and help agriculture move along?
Seriously?
Bring it on.
You know better than that.
Deputy Mayor? I believe they call that T-ball, so you're up.
Government has failed to recognize at many instances, and all levels, the importance of what we do when it comes to food production. My challenge has always been how to make people aware. I don't do this for me. I've had a good life. I'm 51. At the end of the day, you know, I've seen coast to coast, province to province, everything up and down. I know what the realities are. I also know what the realities are in other worlds. China, it may become the second-largest wine-growing region, but certainly Ontario isn't even close to that. We're far behind and we've lagged. You've got to remember, Ontario wines were known for Baby Duck. That's, you know, a 20-year reality for a lot of us. We've changed that process. We've become quite popular, but we specialized on what was there. You also have to remember that food processing plants have closed up all the way through Ontario. And frankly, most of northern, most of the northeastern part of North America, you don't find many of the large food processing plants anymore, except along the western side of what's there. Trade is altering what we do. This year, I can, well, over the last eight months, I can tell you that the embargo that Russia put on all food products coming into that country from the countries that it dissuaded at impacted upon us in a huge fashion because Europe had to dump all its foods over here. Onions, carrots, greenhouse production, beef, everything like that was dumped into North America. We are now globalized. The reality is, is that if we do not start to refocus on a few things, our reliance on other countries for food will become larger than what it is. And that reliance is going to be somewhat problematic because, as Putin showed, if you get ticked off at somebody, he's just going to close things down. If he really wanted to get ticked off, he wouldn't send anything over to us. And that's where people are going to have to remember. If you don't have food on the shelves, we're good for about three days. They did a study once. The reality is municipalities should have that emergency impact studies out there all the time. They should be looking at the one thing. You need air. Everybody knows that. Three minutes without air, you die. Three days without water, you die. These are basic fundamental biologies. It's three weeks without food, you die. I mean, we can all live off whatever fat that we have stored up, but at the end of the day, that's what it's going to boil down to. And people don't recognize that because in this country, we've never had any kind of food shortage or a situation. food shortage or a situation, even pre-war. We never had what Europeans went through at that time. We've forgotten about this. So as you see other countries building into it, Chile doesn't have enough food to feed its own population, but it's actually the largest exporter of fruits and vegetables into North America right now. These are realities that we're dealing with. That helps. Your governments all need to step up to the plate at some point or else they won't get food. And by the way, I work for farmers, I'm always gonna get fed.
And one more question. Sure. Mister Deputy Mayor. So Jamie, you talked about the food and the hub and the processing here in Hamilton. And of course, we have the airport here, we have train, we have truck, we have the port. And the port does a lot of, you know, exporting of grains out of here. And the bread, maple leaf meats, we have the soy plant, parish and Heimbecker, Richardson grains. Can you see, do you see Hamilton as being more of a hub and more of a transportation or shipping, importing grains and food products and expansion for other companies that come here? I mean, you know, we've lost the Kellogg's, and we've lost Hummers and different ones, different ketchup plants and things. Is there potential for that to come back here? What can we do to bring these companies back here and do more processing, create more jobs?
But you already started the process. You know, boy, I almost said something, I shouldn't have. You've already started the process, councillor, in that you've acquired my belief, you've looked at some of the realistic expectations, you have a planning staff and an economic development staff that have started to realise that it may be the medium-sized country, companies that you attract. If you had not taken notice, we had huge issues getting grain out of this country over the last year. Just ask the folks out west. They would just as happily have sent it through Sault Ste. Marie and down to a port and then gotten it out of here than what did take place, which is they lost about fifteen percent of the grain to mold, rust and everything else because they weren't able to store it properly because they had such a huge boom. And we lost key markets. We lost Russia, we lost parts of, was taking place with Pakistan. These were key markets that people forgot that this is where our grain export goes. Do I see the potential for Hamilton? I see it greater than any other area right now. Because you do have the ability to infill, and you do have lands that are available that are industrial. We won't get out of the whole idea of food being commercial industrial somewhere along the way. I will argue to my dying breath that corporate farms are only in a dentistry out in the western side of the province, that three percent of all the farms inside this country are corporate, the rest are family-owned. They may be corporations, but that's just business sense, they just don't wanna get sued. But you folks, you folks have done very well with what you can and can't do. And your hub, the fact that you're gonna have a cooler inside the airport, the fact that you're doing some of the things that are needed from a municipal end, you're actually one of the ones that are pushing in front. Like I said, you're the second largest food cluster, in the second largest food cluster in North America. The only greater food cluster is LA. Chicago, really, but I discount Chicago.
All right, thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Mister Deputy Mayor Green. Thank you for the great questions, councillor Pursuta. We now have councillor Conley.
I really enjoyed your presentation, but ironically, I was at Salt Fleet High School yesterday, and we were talking, they have a big greenhouse there, and they actually grow vegetables, and they actually teach a course there. And I thought it was very unique because it's not normal in the schools. And the kids are getting educated on farming and how to produce food. And I was just wondering, it'd be an important element, I would think, to get into the schools so our next generation knows what's going on and can appreciate a lot more than my generation, in all honesty. So is there any, anything that you might be doing as an association to encourage schools to get involved in this? Or anything we can do, or anything for our relationship with the schools to help the situation?
I'm going to speak from a certain amount of irony. The new role that I took at the Country Heritage Park is exactly for that. I'm in the edutainment business now. I'm there to educate. I get twelve thousand kids going through that park every year. I'm the bridge between the rural and urban gap. I've got an escarpment behind me and five million people in front of me. And I am very tired of answering the question, asking the question, where does your food come from? And having them say the grocery store that they do. We've tried to have curriculum changes for thirty years. Thirty years ago, they took out things like Home Ec. Thirty years ago, they took out things about how to be able to do things. And we've seen the results of that decision. We've seen increases in teenage diabetes, we've seen obesity, we've seen levels of food-related diseases go right through the roof. That's a healthcare cost, and that's an economics cost that we don't want to address because of one simple curriculum change. It's always difficult to do it, I'm always encouraged. We had one of the first schools that I've ever worked with nearly twenty years ago, still keeps it going, and it's a garden in Shakespeare. And that's the whole point about doing this. I don't look at your community gardens as anything other than the opportunity to be able to educate from a social aspect the vital importance of having fresh product. Shouldn't always just be alfagetis, no offence to alfagetis, but it shouldn't always be alfagetis. It has to be a mix of fresh product that goes in there, and it has to be something other than what we've gotten used to. Strawberries three hundred sixty-five days a year is a fallacy. It is an economic fallacy, and it's a mess. And I'll tell you, the biggest thing that I've learned from my generation is that I used to love getting an orange at Christmas time, and that was in the stocking. Everybody that got one, you'd just have it at the end, you'd get an orange or you'd get a tangerine. Nobody knows that because you get a five-pound bag for three bucks. But it was a treat when you're a four-year-old to get an orange in December because you didn't see oranges. These are the realities that we have to address and start to talk about. The association does that, the alliance does that, we work with Durham College, we work at Conestoga College, we work with a number of other educators to be able to provide that base. And one of the ministries I deal with is education. So Liz Sandals knows who I am, so.
Well, we have started it in Hamilton with Salt Fleet High School.
Yes.
It's a very successful course, apparently. I was very pleased to see that. Oh, maybe we have to encourage the other high schools to, I'll surely do that in my area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair. Thank you. We have exhausted our first-time speakers list. I'd like to pass the chair over to Mister Mayor Fred Eisenberger, so I can, just a few comments, Mister Rioma. I really appreciate the points you've brought up. Certainly, zeroed in on that innovation in one of your five pillars, I found that fascinating to learn about, the work that's being done in agriculture. We're hearing it now from our consultants as well about the big opportunity that we have in agriculture, and certainly councillor Pursuta and all of our rural councillors, Johnson and the rest are very admitted on pushing that forward. My question is, in that space of innovation, what relationships do we have existing currently with our local post-secondary institutions? You hear about Grolf as being an agricultural kind of hub, but in that space of innovation, I know McMaster's trying to own that space, are there any programs or are there any opportunities here locally that we can be pursuing?
Quite honestly, the move forward in farming and food is going to be reliant upon the computer age. The push is gonna be about developing beyond the inside of an internet. We're gonna need rural broadband, even for some of your outlying areas, and I can tell you, just going through the backside of the number eight, for example. Rural broadband is a requirement, Dundas has the requirements. The reality is, is that programming is going to be the way of doing things. It's not going to be a simple matter of just having a pad and paper and a tractor anymore. You know, the robotics side of what we do is getting there because labour costs are escalating. So people are gonna find very well-paying jobs inside there. You mentioned the greenhouse. Greenhouse happens to be the largest economic sector taking place right now. But the reality is, is that there's a need for heavy vets. It's not wealth anymore, they have a smaller program for that, but the heavy animal vets are required. Last time I checked, we still have horses and cows in this province, and yet there doesn't seem to be that impetus to go there. Science is still huge. The reality is, is that the opportunities inside of food and farming are limitless. And there's always the requirement, and I say this with a certain amount of chagrin, that there's always a requirement for a political aspect that goes with it. These people that we're bringing up have been brought up in a world of complete electronics. They know nothing different. They don't know what it's like to stand in the middle of a field and actually have your cellphone go off. They, I don't think, would be able to respond. I have a seventeen and a fifteen-year-old, I'm sure that they haven't a clue some days why daddy does what he does. But that's the reality, is that there are careers, and it's all varied. There are opportunities all the way through. And there's a lot of opportunities to go inside what I call that cutting edge because, ironically enough, it was the farming section that led innovation all the way through. The industrial revolution was not started because of factories, it was started because of the cotton gin and the ability to do something better on an economic scale to be able to have that go forward.
Thank you very much for that. You brought up some great points as well around expansion of the green belts, some of our class one and two lands, and our decisions on land use. And then you also mentioned infill, which I found very interesting. I know I've had some preliminary conversations around innovation and what infill might look like with greenhouses, vertical farming, and this kind of cutting-edge stuff. And I'm just wondering, going back to councillor Pursuta's point, with regards to what's gonna happen on our waterfront and where the opportunities might be for innovation and us being this kind of hub, this regional hub for transport.
You know what's besting in this province? A real key innovative way of looking at what you're doing. So if you've got grain production, you know, come up with something that actually is something that people want. You know, food production, anything like that. What we lack is the ability to take a small-scale idea into a medium-sized marketplace. Basically, some of the monopolisation of our grocery stores has, and right, wrong or indifferent, when three companies control eighty-seven percent of the marketplace, you're kinda screwed on what you got. But there's a huge opportunity for people that are looking for different products. We are seeing this now. We are seeing a shift in towards that health side. It may seem kinda wonky, but I mean, that's what you do, is you line up the markets in advance knowing what you're gonna end up doing. When the Chinese bought Smithfield down in California, the fear was that the Chinese hogs that they've got was gonna come into the United States and, oh, the chagrins and everything else. Actually, the reality was much different. Chinese bought Smithfield because they wanted the American products going into their country because they're safer than what they do. We're in Canada, we have a huge advantage in that we have food safety protocols, we have farm safety protocols, we have clean water aspect. These are realities that eighty percent of the world don't have. Start to market what's smart about it, start to go after the Asian markets if you want because the one thing that they recognise are two images. They recognise the Rocky Mountains, that glacial image out of Alberta, and they recognise the Great Lakes. It's too bad your chamber guy left because he actually had an idea we've been bouncing around for a decade, which is work on a coalition with the Great Lakes. Eight states, two provinces, I'll even throw in Manitoba just for the hell of it. But, you know, having that kind of an aspect and marketing over into that side, there's only a few areas that can get the product out. You're one of them. That's how we're gonna have to either do it or we're gonna see ourselves shut up.
Thank you very much, Mister Rioma. Here's to hoping for a future port that is shipping, you know, all of our regions' food in and out of Hamilton. Are there any other questions for the first-time speakers list? Any other questions for the presenter at all? May I please have a motion to receive the presentation, so moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Vanderbeek. All those in favour carried? Any opposed reserve the same rights? Thank you very much, Mister Rioma, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
We are now on to staff presentations. I'd like to call upon Chris Murray to provide the presentation for item seven point one.
I think I'm good to go. So with, should, okay, to you, Mister Mayor, and members of committee, just, it's a pleasure to be here. This is something that we do annually, a public presentation on my performance. And so with that, I know afterwards you go in camera with our executive director of HR and discuss anything you need to in camera. But with that, it's a pleasure to be here. Just before I get started, just, I joined the region of Hamilton Wentworth July fourth, nineteen ninety-five. I left the private sector, I was a consultant doing environmental planning largely on transportation projects. And I came to the municipality not because I had a great desire to be a municipal worker, I came because I was interested in pursuing something called integrated planning, where you marry land use and infrastructure planning together. And out of that grew what now is called grids. It's basically the framework upon which our official plan and master infrastructure plans hang. So that's why I came, because it was an opportunity to produce something, pursue something that the consulting firm I worked for wasn't interested in trying to market. So I joined, and I joined the region, as I say, and it was the special projects office that was responsible for Red Hill, which then led to me becoming the director of the Red Hill Valley Project, which afterwards I then went on to do housing, and then found myself in this position. So when I started in this job, I think for those that were here back January first, two thousand and nine, I think one of the first things I said was that I was gonna spend a third of my time working, building a relationship with council, a third of my time working, building a relationship with staff, and then the last third focused on strategy. Strategies that benefit this community and our citizens in it, and strategy to help our staff. So with that, today's presentation, I'm gonna talk about governance. By that I mean the relationship between our citizens, council and staff. I'm gonna talk about alignment as it relates to our vision and our mission. I'll give you an update as to where we are with respect to our strategy. This is the strategy or strategic plan that we have that covers the area or the period of time two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen. I'm gonna talk about leadership, what's happening with SMT and some changes that we're making. And then I'll speak about my office and what we're focused on day after day. I just wanna point out, I think some of you have a copy, this is the very first edition of the two thousand and fourteen annual review. It's going to be public, it'll be online as of Friday, so we're not going heavy with paper copies, it's gonna be electronic for the most, but it covers all the good things that have happened last year, speaks to our budget, but more importantly, it speaks to all the successes that we've enjoyed across our organisation in two thousand and fourteen. And I have to thank Mike Kirkoplis and his communications people for putting this together and I think doing a wonderful job. So with that, governance. Now, what you see here is there's an important relationship between the community, city council, and the civic administration. And so having just come off an election, you heard very clearly from your constituents what was important to them. And your responsibility back to them is this term of council, to ensure that you provide leadership around those topics that are near and dear to their hearts. So they spoke about a number of things. They spoke about the economy, certainly jobs, living wage jobs. Are we all right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Living wage jobs, talked about taxes, talked about transportation, be it transit, LRT in particular, talked about a variety of things of which they basically empower you to represent them and make sure that things are happening with respect to what's important to your citizens. The relationship between city council and our administration is that you give us that direction, we come back with a strategy by which to get things done, and we manage to make sure that those things that you feel are important do happen. And then of course, the relationship between the administration and the community each and every day. We provide services, and you'll recall that there was a service delivery review done a number of years ago, which we determined that we provide eighty-nine different services in this organisation, which are all, except for about ten percent, have very important key performance indicators, but they outline exactly what it is that we provide people. And so it's not just about the services we provide, it is about the value that people get for their tax dollars when we deliver those services. So that's a very important relationship, and one that I'll come back to the course's presentation. The vision. All of you know it, to be the best place in Canada to raise a child, promote innovation, engage citizens and provide diverse economic opportunities. And I've said before, and I think all of you know this very well, when we talk about the best place in Canada to raise a child, certainly it is about the children and creating an environment for them to be successful, but of course, it means more than the children, it means everyone, the entire system that enriches their lives. And so the thinking is, is that if we do things right by the children and support those that, help raise those children, that we'll be doing right for the entire community. When we talk about promoting innovation, organisations that don't change eventually just die. It's like if we're a fish in a fishbowl, it's a fish that no longer swims. So it's important that when we look at innovation, we're looking at ways in which to do things better. And when I think about innovation, I think about the fact that with innovation comes trial and error, and sometimes things... and error. And sometimes things work and sometimes they don't work. But you must make sure that you support a culture of innovation if you want to do things better and effectively deliver services better and save money for the taxpayers. But I'll also add this about innovation. We have to, and it's really a mindset. You know, are we here to avoid risk or are we here to manage risk? You know, and I go back, and as I mentioned from the outset about, you know, my career here, which will be twenty years as of July 4th, you know, when I look at really what is my skill set, I mean, it, certainly I'm an environmental planner by education and by experience. I have an ability, I think, to pull together people that can get things done. I'm built to solve problems and chase opportunities. But I think maybe above all of that, what I think I do as well is I try to manage risks. And then when I look at the Red Hill Valley Project and other projects like that that are complicated and somewhat risky, that management of risk is really what I think is important for us to do. It doesn't mean that we avoid risk and we stay in bed and not get out of the bed in the morning. It means that we manage risk and we manage it effectively. Engaging citizens, all of you know, this is one area of our vision that we have made a lot of ground up. Engaging citizens does not mean that you give away your responsibility to make decisions. You are empowered to make decisions. That will always be the case. But we have, as you well know, an engagement charter. So what it means is that there's effectively a policy that this organization now has around engagement. And with that comes the fact that we've trained a number of people in the organization how to do good engagement. You know, to get the interest, the issues out early on any given topic so that we understand it and we can provide useful answers to you that help you in making a decision. So I think that's a major step forward, certainly in this term. You've seen the charter, and it's something that's going to help us going down the road. Provide diverse economic opportunities. There's no secret. I think you've heard it this morning already. Our economy is moving. And as you know, there's a report coming in later this month where we're going to talk about growth and how we facilitate development. And I thought it was interesting, the other night on CBC Toronto, Mayor Tory in Toronto talked about, within their administration, he described it as the culture of no. This idea that people come through the door and the answer to them is no. And I think very clearly, and what you've directed us to do and what we're bringing back to you, is more of the culture of welcome, how can we help you. And certainly open for business has been down that path. And how we embrace the economic opportunities presenting right now is going to be important. The other thing I want to leave with you, when we talk about economic development, it's not just about the process for approving growth. And I was meeting with some folks the other day at McMaster University. It is also about that first point about the best place in Canada to raise a child. You have to have a community that people want to come to. So you have to have the amenities, and you have to do them incredibly well. So when folks in our organization are mowing lawns, or picking up garbage, or clearing snow, or museums, or any aspect of the service we do, doing it incredibly well makes us that much more successful when it comes to attracting the businesses and the people that we need here. So it's not just about what Neil Everson does, or what Planning Economics does. It's about our entire package of services and how well we do them that will make people sit up and think about why aren't they in Hamilton? And I think that's the attitude that is being promoted across our organization. The mission. I find it interesting when we say we will provide quality public services that contribute to a healthy, safe, and prosperous community in a sustainable manner. You helped us tremendously in the last strategic plan, and that this thing used to be about a paragraph and a half long. So we've condensed it to something that's reasonably easy to remember. But, you know, when I look at our vision, the best place in Canada to raise a child, it starts to beg the question, why can't we be the best municipality in Canada as well? And I think that's a goal that, you know, maybe some will think, well, that's a hail mary. I don't think it is a hail mary, because there's some information I want to present to you that I think is important. IPSIS-REED does a survey every two years, every two to three years across the country, where they engage people and ask them how satisfied are they with government services. So for the last two cycles we've participated in this survey, asking them to drill down more specifically on how satisfied people are with the services that Hamilton provides. Because I don't know how you get better unless you know what it is you do well and what you don't do so well. So the results are actually just in, and we're going to be bringing the report forward to you so you can see them in its detail. But I think the one fact that is kind of interesting here is that in terms of overall measurement, and what I mean by that, when we compare ourselves to the best municipalities, be it local or regional, in the country, the highest has scored sixty-seven. Hamilton scored sixty-six. We're pretty close. In fact, you know, one might argue statistically we're pretty much as good as anyone else. And so I don't think that causes us to stop doing what we're doing, but it does point out the fact, and IPSIS-REED, for anyone that knows, is obviously a nationally important polling and surveying company that does a lot of work. There are some areas that they identify where people aren't as happy with, and I know we'll be talking about later today, if there's some mention of roads and the way in which we maintain our roads. And so that's hopefully something we're going to be able to fix in very much a hurry. But interesting report, and we'll share the detail with you. The other thing that you should know is OMBI, the Ontario Municipal Benchmarking Initiative, which we participate in with many other cities across this province. In fact, it's expanded now across the country, out west and in Quebec. They're now involved in OMBI. And there are basically thirty-six different areas or service areas that are measured year after year in the OMBI data. I co-chair the committee that is set up by the CAOs in Ontario. And I'll tell you right now that Hamilton, eighty-six percent, and when I look at all the services that we provide and compare them to everyone else, eighty-six percent of our instances, we are as good, if not better, than everyone else. Sixty percent of that eighty-six percent, we are right in the middle of the pack with municipalities in providing the services. Twenty percent, or twenty-six percent, sorry, we are the leader in that particular area. And so the OMBI information I've shared with you, and I'll share with you again so that you see it, the interesting thing is, is that in the areas where we are falling behind, so there are some, we have some work to do, certainly in terms of tax collection. We have some work to do in some of our other areas, certainly in housing. I think there's some work we have to do there as well. But the good thing is, is that we have, we're aware of it, we've been aware of it, and we have a plan to address it. So from an OMBI standpoint, you know, Hamilton fares quite well when compared to its rivals, if you will. The other thing I want to point out is that over the last couple of years, you've seen a significant improvement in terms of grievances. Grievance activity is dropping. I like to think that we're establishing better relationships with our unionized frontline workers. As well, I want to point out from an absenteeism perspective, which you've said in spades, that this needs to be addressed. We've seen those numbers drop, and I know Helen's coming in with a report in a couple of weeks. You know, those numbers have been dropping. They're flatlining a bit, but I think we are certainly heading in the right direction. That's largely because of your direction to us to pay attention to it and make sure that people are trained and understand what it is they're supposed to do. And so I think we're making progress there. The other thing that strikes me that I want to tell you, which is, you know, I guess, and I might phrase it as a bit of a ray of sunshine, and that is, our young professionals who meet on a regular basis, and I know, Jermaine, you've met with them, and I know others have met with them, but it took it upon themselves to come up with an idea that would help the organization. And so their idea was to apply for the top one hundred companies in the country. And so all the paperwork for that has been assembled and has been submitted. So I don't know what the answer is to that. But what I like about that is, is that the attitude of those that are new to the organization is that this organization is one worth working with, and is one that they're proud to be part of. And the fact that they want to see just how good are we, I think is an incredibly important point. So with that, you know, we'll report back as to how we do. And if we're not successful the first try, we don't quit easy. Culture pillars and values. I mean, you're very familiar, obviously, the values that you see listed here, the ones that you developed as part of that last strategic plan. And the pillars, as you see, the collective ownership, steadfast integrity, courageous change, sensational service, and engaged empowered employees, was developed a couple of years ago. All members, all departments in our organization and people from all levels, and there was about fifty or sixty of us that got together, started with the question about if you left Hamilton and you came back in five years, what would you want to see the same? What would you want to see stopped? Or what would you like to see started? And so out of that grew a conversation which has led to these pillars that you see here. And I'll talk in a few seconds here about how they've been affecting the way in which we look at ourselves and how we measure our progress moving forward. But they have been very much established to create that, if you will, to create that benchmark upon which we want to hit. And so they've been well communicated in the organization. And I can say that the departments are all coming up with a strategy collectively this year for us to be able to survey our staff, to see if we're making the kind of progress that we want on our cultural travel here. So it's an important piece of work for us. It affects a number of things. It affects how we hire people and also affects how we do performance accountability. So it's serving us well. And I think our goal is to make sure that the culture of this organization, and when I talk about culture, I mean, there are really four types of culture for any organization. I don't care if it's public or private sector. There's an engaged culture, which is what we want to be. If you want to talk about value for money, have an organization that's engaged and you'll get value for money. The other types of cultures, though, speak to are cultures of entitlement, where basically, you know, you get paid and you just do whatever you feel like doing that particular day. There's the sweatshop culture, where basically very much top-down, very dictatorial, and that people, you know, rather than contributing in the way in which they can, they feel basically that they're trapped and that they're, you know, that they're not valued the way, you know, we typically value people. And the last is the aimless culture, where basically people aren't clear on what it is they expect, there's expected of them, and really are not, you know, really not contributing the way in which they should. So those are the four cultural types. But I can tell you the one that these pillars are aimed at is an engaged culture, which we think is the right way to go. From a strategy standpoint, as I point out, the 2012 to 15 strategic plans, a four-year plan, when I started, what struck me about the first official plan, which was an absolute breakthrough and important document for council to have to guide the organization, what struck me about it, though, there was about, there was over fifty priorities. And I've said before, I don't do fifty of anything. If I'm lucky, I can do three. And so we boiled this down to three fundamental areas, as you can see here. They're supported by thirteen objectives and sixty-four specific actions. So that's what the last term of council came at. And last term of council and this term of council, we did the same, one thing that was similar, and that is, when I sit down with you and I ask you about your aspirations, I mean, I want to know, because I've said to you one-on-one and I've said to you publicly, this is a tough job. We know as staff, certainly senior staff, just how difficult it is to be an elected official. You are in a fishbowl every day. Saturday mornings at the grocery store, someone comes to you, the chance of them saying something nice to you is slim, but possible nonetheless. So we want you to be successful. And so that's why last term of council and this term of council, we sit down and we talk to you, because I want to do what I did the very last, well, in 2014, when I had a chance to stand up in front of you and talk about all your successes, and there were many. And so we want to be able to do that again. And so that's, that was the underpinning to these, this strategy you see in front of you right now, which, as I say, will come to an end the end of 2015. Of the sixty-four actions that we agreed upon, I can tell you every single one of them is underway, as you would expect. I can tell you that seventy-five percent of those actions will be completed in this term. The twenty-five percent that are going to carry over were by their nature, actions that would take longer to complete. For example, not just having a housing plan, but implementing a housing plan is something that can't be done necessarily in a few years, as well as the capital investment that needs to be made in your waterfront and downtown. We are well on our way, but again, there's some more work that needs to be done. But just, you know, to say to you very clearly, and I was told when I got this job, Chris, try to get a couple of things done. Don't bite off everything. Just get a few things, do them well, and we'll be happy with that approach. Senior management. In light of the times that we're facing, in light of the opportunities that are staring us in the face, I thought it was really important for senior management to, we meet as a group, as you would expect. So as a group, we certainly address issues regarding our people. As a group, we address crises when they do occur and we have to come together. We obviously meet as a group around budget. So those are the typical areas that all of us are around the table talking. So we will have those conversations continue to do so. But there's some specific work that we felt was really important to create these other tables that don't necessarily involve everyone from SMT. So economic development and growth is one, for example. I mean, there's a few of our general managers and some of our directors meet to talk about things like the waterfront and downtown evolving that, but also to talk about what we've called the Ian Neville Report, and just how we're going to make improvements in the way in which we accommodate growth here in this community. So these are very structured tables that the basic focus is to get the right people around the table and to drive action. So that's why they exist. Service excellence is really Mike Zagarik and myself and Helen Tomasic. And what we're doing here is we're looking at everything from corporate services, how they're delivered, to just aspects of our human resource strategy. Health and well-being is where we sit down with Elizabeth and Joanne, and we work on specific strategies for housing, food securities, things of that nature. So these tables help us to kind of move things faster. They don't require everyone from SMT to be there. It's just a better way of managing our work and getting things done. Our people. As I pointed out, my second area of focus, after ensuring that council is satisfied with the relationship that we have, because we know, no matter how many good ideas we have, if council is not on board, we're wasting our time. But in terms of our people, I look at our people from the standpoint of how can I help them in their jobs and how can I help them in their career? And everything that we're doing here right now is really focused on those two things. So talent management within that, I mean, we want to make sure that succession planning is top of mind and that we're bringing along the next wave of leaders to make sure that they're going to do a great job. And so that's something that we're focusing on. Corporate culture, I've talked about. Communications. As you know, I have a day-in-the-life program where anyone in the organization can book my time, and I come out and I meet with them, groups, individuals. So I've dug graves. I've been up in the bucket trimming trees, although they wouldn't put a chainsaw in my hand, which is probably wise. So I get a chance to see what people do. And I'm telling you, it's, it's some of the best days that I have are being able to, you know, to be with our frontline workers, because everything that happens that matters is happening through the frontline. But I've evolved the communications as well with Mike's help to include things like after council, I want our, I want our staff to understand the great decisions that you guys are making. So I do a three-minute YouTube clip after every council meeting, and I send it out to our entire workforce to highlight the things that you've done. So some of it gets covered by the media, which is great, but not always all of it. And so the feedback I get on that, and usually the uptake within about an hour of me putting it online is somewhere in a thousand to two thousand hits right off the top. But it gives them a sense of their part of something that's moving forward. And so I get good feedback on that. We do EMT Extended Management Team meeting where I get in front of the leadership twice a year. So that's about six hundred and fifty of our leaders, just to give them updates as to where we are, where we're going. I can't say enough about communications. I mean, not just what we do with the external world, but the internal world is critical. Mike and his team has done a great job. Engagement, obviously important. And so I'm not going to spend much more time on that. I think I've talked about it. Performance accountability and development, I just want to say that the tool that we had before where we evaluated people's work was a seventeen-page document that most people hated with a passion. So we came up with a new tool. What you have, I think, is for the in-camera session is an example of what that tool is now. It focuses typically on goals first, competencies second, and then I'm interested in individuals. And it's tipped, right now, it's focused on the leadership rank in our organization. We're going to roll out performance accountability to the frontline, which you might be surprised that performance accountability tools are rare when it comes to the frontline across municipalities. But nonetheless, we're going to make that happen. But again, it's about asking people their career aspirations and then starting to, again, go back to helping them in their job or in their career, make sure that the training that's necessary for them to be successful in their job or in their career is identified, and we start to invest in the things that are important. So it's our way of connecting with our staff. And these things don't happen once a year, like each time we meet with people, which is sometimes monthly, sometimes quarterly. It's a tool that guides their conversation. So I mean, it's not something, and really it is about the conversation, to be honest. The paper's important, but really it's the face-to-face time with staff that I think is where we're going to be successful. My office, I got to tell you, I judge everything by how I feel Monday morning when I come into work. And I can honestly say, I mean, everyone that works in my office, you know, whether Andrea, Darlene, and God knows, you're nowhere without a great admin. You know, Mike- You know, Mike, Paul, Lisa, you know, Dennis, Andy, Quab, these are the people that, when I come in Monday morning, I look forward to seeing them. And it reminds me of the days when I ran Red Hill. It's one of those situations where, no matter what the challenge is that's ahead of you, if you've got the right group of people around you, you know, you feel that you can accomplish just about anything. And so I think you know many of these people, and I know I'm pretty blessed to have them with me, and they're just a great team to wake up every Monday morning to. We focus on a number of things. Communications, corporate communications, as you've have directed, are occurring, so I don't need to say too much about... He's done a fantastic job for us. The size that we're doing right now, and ironically, other major institutions are doing the same, which I'll talk about in a second. Government relations with Quab. Two weeks ago, on Friday, I was in Toronto, meeting with the Deputy Ministers of Finance, Economic Development, Transportation, and Municipal Affairs, you know, more or less to introduce ourselves to them, to make sure that they know who we are, and to start to connect with them on things that they're doing that are important. And there's a lot of activity happening in the province. And so Quab, having many years of experience working with government, both on the political and administrative side, is going to be extremely helpful. The other external partnerships, I mean, at the end of the day, it all boils down to relationships, having good relationships. So I work with hospitals, I work with the school boards, universities, colleges, port authorities, airports. You know, the ability to pick up the phone and know the person on the other side quite well is always helpful. And so with any relationship, there are going to be good days and bad days, but at the end of the day, if you evaluate, if you evaluate the relationships, typically, good things have happened. And so, you know, we've got, you know, a wonderful campus across the street that's going to be open shortly, and other things are happening as a result of, I think, of us spending the time to get to know each other and help each other. Continuous improvement. And you'll see in my P A, one of the goals I have is to advance something called Lean. For those that are familiar with Lean, the private sector was really where this Lean and Six Sigma and the idea of Kaizen, so it's something that the private sector had developed decades ago. Toyota, I think, is probably the most notable, as well as Ford and others. Patient is, you make it good. And so with the support of management, you know, it's an, they took something and fixed it, and we're going to show that to you in the coming weeks. But the bottom line is that Niagara has been applying Lean for the last couple of years. I know London was just down in Fredericton, New Brunswick, talking to the municipality there about how they've applied Lean. Lean's a way to do more with what you got, and in some cases, a way in which to kind of do what you need to do for maybe less money and less aggravation. So it's a concept that has been around for a while, and Paul is going to look into, how do we make this an enterprise within our organization? So it's going to be exciting. And then lastly, key initiatives. I mean, I know every time we talk about the waterfront, typically, what happens, councilors spin around, and instead of looking at Jason or looking at Jerry, they typically look at me and ask me questions about waterfront. And so if you're going to continue to do that, I'm going to take responsibility for it. So I am going to be accountable for the waterfront to make sure that that happens. And I can say, you know, what kind of motivates us in the office and the organization is that we want this term of council, the lands that we own, to be shovel-ready, to have them in the hands of people who are going to fulfill our plans, our designs, and make Hamiltonians even more proud of what we've already accomplished. And so with that, I'm done. I just want to make one final point, and that is, this 2015 budget that you approved, I mean, we went last term and we averaged 1.3 tax increase, which was the second lowest in Ontario. And so the 2.7 that you gave us with all the resources, and I must admit, 133 F D Es is a lot of resources, and we know their focus in ambulance, we know that their focus in fire, or in transit, sorry, and certainly supporting economic growth. My comment to staff, and this is consistent with the G M's and directors, is that I don't want to see just at the end of the year, you know, evidence around value for money. You are, when you give us that kind of resource, and when we spend the $1.9 billion a year that we spend on this organization, I think we've got to do a lot more to communicate each and every day the value for money that people are getting here. That helps you explain to citizens, you know, what we're doing. It addresses, you know, all the good things that we're doing, and it's not just about us describing the services that we provide, it's about us describing how well we provide them. So that message is loud and clear. Mike has got that message straight through to his comms people. I've got that message straight through to our general managers and directors. I want to make sure that, and you see some of that in this report, I want you to see a more regular dialogue on just the successes that we're having. So with that, I'm done and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murray. Certainly a comprehensive report. Looking around the table, I don't actually have anybody on the speakers list, although I do have a few. Oh, we have Counselor Collins. Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And as always, Chris, a very detailed presentation, and as many of us have said over the years, we're very fortunate to have you at the helm, steering us through many of these issues. And as you suggest, you know, there are times when we're in the business of crisis management, and you've certainly helped provide a steady hand during times of, when we deal with those situations. So I thank you for that publicly. I do want to address the whole issue of succession planning. I raised this last year when you mentioned it in your presentation, and I know that a number of us around the table are familiar with some of the people who are leaving in the next year, two years, maybe even three years. They're eligible to take their retirement, and some have made it quite known that they will be leaving the organization within that timeframe. Some are the most senior employees that we have, and so we'll be losing a lot of corporate knowledge. And I'm wondering whether we'll receive a detailed presentation in terms of what areas of the organization will be most affected by those employees who are retiring, and then what is the precise plan in terms of getting the necessary individuals or appropriate individuals in place to fill the gap and the void that's left from those people who are leaving our employ? So through you to Chris, Mr. Chairman, is there an opportunity to have some kind of a presentation at G I C along those lines?
Yeah, through you, Chairman, of course, and we'll be doing that. One of the first steps was asked through our performance accountability document, to get people to put in writing as to what is their long-term plans. In some cases, they're not very long at all. In fact, we're talking, in some cases, months and a few years. What that does is then puts us in a position to start to work through who it is that, within our organization, might be ready for those positions, and if they're not ready, what is it that we've got to do with people in the organization to invest in them, to get them ready? So that's exactly what this plan is doing right now. We're happy to provide you an update as to where our vulnerabilities are, how we're going to go about filling them, and, you know, it's not, you know, it's not replacement planning, it's succession planning. And so we have, I think, a very good handle on where our challenges are and how we're going to address them. So happy to provide that report very soon.
Thanks for that, Chris. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other first-time speakers? Yes, Counselor Whitehead.
I've been wondering, Chris, the general managers are so important in the operation. They oversee a significant portfolio of department and lots of interactions. I'm wondering, on a policy side, when there's a secondments to different committees and so forth, do you feel it's appropriate to have a general manager seconded from the top tier of the organization for any period of time?
Yeah, through you, Chairman. I understand your question. I mean, oftentimes, those committees, they can be seen as a reward for someone else in the organization to attend and bring their, you know, knowledge to the table. And it's interesting what you're saying. One of the exercises we're going through right now is on leadership in terms of roles and responsibilities. Because I firmly believe that what I did as a manager, and then what I do as a director, is two different things. You know, and what I do as a director and what I do as a general manager is, again, another different thing. And so, you know, the further you go up, you know, the organization, the further the view, you know, your brain should have in terms of where the organization is going, and the more you should be geared towards making sure you've got all the right people in the right seats in the right time at the right place, doing the right things, and that your view should be kind of that higher arching view. Get out of the weeds. You know, you don't need to be the content expert, you know, and work in the two-foot level, when in fact, what your real value to the organization is at the strategic level. So I look at those committees, those projects, those whatever, as really rewards for the motivated staff that we have. And so increasingly, I think that's where we've got to go. I think some of the feeling, though, and just we, maybe you can clear it up right now real quick, is that, you know, some of the feeling might be around the S M T table that, you know, council expects the, you know, the senior leadership to answer all the questions. I know when I'm in committee here, when you guys have questions about finance, I'm not offended that you ask Mike. You know, it's the way in which I actually ran Red Hill, and I ran all my, I'm a planner. I don't disrespect my engineers or my terrestrial ecologists or my, you know, economics people or whatever like that. I expect them to answer those questions. And so I expect people in the organization, especially those that are in the, you know, in the, say, the entry-level leadership positions or the frontline positions, if they can answer the questions, they deserve the opportunity.
And I think that leads to the succession planning, when those experiences are passed down to the experts that you rely on as a general manager. So I guess that the point I'm making is that, consistent with the succession planning, we should be ensuring the general managers are at that high level, is the strategic point, but we should be empowering and relying on many of the great people that are underneath them to take a higher-profile lead in leadership and within the roles that they have expertise in. And I just, I think that's a bit, what I'm looking for, restrained, and I'd like to see more of those, because I know we have great people. We all know who they are. I'd just love to see them unleash a little bit more in regards to interaction with council and et cetera.
If I can, through the Chairman, I'll just give you a real-life example. When I was asked by the general manager, right kind of when amalgamation took place, he basically came to me and said, Chris, you're going to have to decide, are you going to continue on with integrated planning, Red Hill, Class EA's and all these other things? Because you can't do them all, you've got to pick something. And I told him, I may have came here to do integrated planning, but I really want to have the shot at doing Red Hill because of, you know, what I might learn. He let me do my job, okay? And so it's when all of a sudden someone comes in and now wants to kind of, you know, take your accountability away. People in the organization want to be accountable. You know, they want to have the opportunity to kind of succeed or fail. And the fact that that general manager gave me the chance to succeed or fail, left the steering wheel in my hands, is why I'm still here. Because I can tell you, if they were successful in kind of, you know, me being just their advisor, I would have gone and done something else. And so you're hitting upon a really important point. The other thing, too, is I would say, in terms of who signs our reports, to be honest, I mean, if it's a fire issue, to me, my fire chief should sign that report, okay? If it's an EMS issue, it's my, you know, chief of EMS you're signing. So I think we need to start to get used to this notion of where the accountability ought to be. You know, ultimately, if it all blows up, you're going to come after me. That's fine. But I'm telling you, I think it's a good way to acknowledge and honor the people that have got the real skill, the real ability, to let them speak and let them sign their names to things that they're going to stand behind. And I think that's kind of where I want to go, and it speaks to what you're saying about succession planning as well.
And the other question I have, and I've raised this before in H R, and that is, and your prime examples, you're a planner, but you're the city manager, and you're exercising, utilizing the expertise around you, and then making, with your acumen, making decisions. And I believe you're making a lot of really good decisions on behalf of the council. So I'm using that as an example, because I don't think our H R system works in that way. Basically, if it's a square peg, then it's not going to fit in that round hole. And that's how we hire here. I mean, we use a computer system, a human resource system, that in my humble opinion is antiquated, is cutting out great people. People like you, who would apply for a job that's maybe not in planning, probably wouldn't get it, although you certainly would have the acumen and the abilities to do the job. That's how our H R system is working. And there's great people that can rise in this, a lot more knowledge and experience and background and very adaptable, that are being excluded from this very linear process in our hiring. So if anything, I would ask, because I've raised this before, scrap that damn computer system, and let's go back to understanding a process that really truly values people's acumen and skill sets and ability to adapt to the job. Because the system we have now stinks. Thanks.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think what you're telling me and what is in fact happening right now in terms of our leadership rank, and certainly in terms of succession planning, it's not just about, you know, the word scan or the black and white on the piece of paper. I mean, we are looking at people that, in some, certainly in moving up the organization, if you will, you know, again, planner, transportation, housing, it's that, you know, how do you... So we're starting to look at the organization from that standpoint, in terms of people that we want to advance into the leadership ranks and then up the leadership ranks. And you're absolutely right. It is about political acumen. It is about business acumen. It is about the technical ability, certainly to some extent. How do you relate to people? Do you know how to motivate people? Do you know how to ensure that they're doing the right work? So our succession planning program is more based on that approach than just, you know... And you're right. I mean, when the G M put me in charge of Red Hill, I'm a planner. When has a planner ever looked after, you know, $280 million engineering job? You know, and so just by luck and maybe a bit of work, I mean, I was given a chance. So I mean, that's, the system has got to morph to that, and I think you're dead right. So I'd be happy in terms of when we talk about succession planning and how we do recruit at the frontline and in management, I'd be happy to show you what we are doing and what we're trending towards so that, you know, we can deal with this round-peg, square-hole phenomenon.
At all, Counselor? Just to take a little bit of sting out of that, I can say that I've used H R on two occasions, and going through 300 applications, it actually does help to have a little bit of a filter there. So they've done a great job. In fact, I'll have a job posting on Thursday for anybody watching, for a summer job, so. Be all over it. There you go. We have Counselors Jackson and Marula on the speakers list, first-time speakers. We will now move to Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thanks for using my football in that last picture. I didn't mind loaning that to you. Chris is back in my office. Thank you. Chris, excellent presentation. You know how politically and personally I am, very proud of you, and the fact that you've been in the leadership role over 7,000 employees, managing this corporation to the best of your ability. And I've always said, through your Red Hill experience, you brought a wide variety of stakeholders to the table to ensure the project that the overwhelming past regional and city governments wanted completed by the people they elected to pass councils. You found a way to get that project completed for all the reasons that the majority of us felt would benefit the community, as well as keeping us out of any situation that may have curtailed the project. So those are the type of attributes, Chris, you've maintained in terms of your new position as city manager. Chris, you know, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we're riding a rocket ship here. The surf is here, and so in spite of a couple of stubborn nuances, like poverty and the residential tax rate, it's an exciting time to be in our city. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Chris, how do we do our best? Because the rocket ship ride will someday run out of fuel, the surf may eventually just ebb away into shore. In spite of those two issues, I just want to know, do you kind of have a plan in terms of continuously trying to address those two issues, especially in the poverty area, that people who are in poverty and want to contribute more to this community and just need to know even their local government is doing their best to provide opportunity? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Chris, please.
Sure. Through Mr. Chairman, well, as you know, a number of things are happening. I mean, we're obviously focused on our ability to take people's ideas when they come in the front door of City Hall and make them happen. As I say to staff, you know, yeah, we provide planning services and infrastructures and all kinds of, we're really in the business of certainty. We want to give people that come through the front door very early in the conversation the certainty that they need to move ahead and make the investment that they need to make. And I say that because it's through that that we get the jobs, not just to build what needs to be built, but to operate what needs to be operated. And so those jobs that we are encouraging, certainly here in Hamilton, are living wage jobs. So those that are struggling in poverty, and some of them are working numerous jobs with, they're getting paid minimum wage, they cannot meet ends, you know, the way that we want. And what's a real challenge right now is we're watching housing prices go up, vacancy rates drop, which means the price on apartments are going to rise, and it's going to make it that much more difficult for people to be able to pay for everything they need. So everything that we can to fuel the economy... So everything that we can to fuel the economy, you know, is critical. The other thing, I mean, Neil's here, and Neil, you know, in terms of making the match between the demands of business, in terms of personnel that they need, and our educational institutions, Neil is placing himself right in the middle between those two important needs and making sure that the parties are talking. And so we have the new president of Mohawk, who is chairing this committee. This is the mayor's task force on this, that is looking at how is it that we can connect the needs of business with the supply chain or the labor that is in this community, and making sure it's trained, whether it be trades or whatever. We know there are thousands of jobs in the next three to five years that are going to be occurring on our waterfront. So this notion about industry, where it's gone, it's here. So don't give up on it. I mean, you know, I'm looking at my own 15-year-old and saying to him, I wouldn't be ruling out, you know, a number of the trades in favor of, you know, a university course that may not in fact provide you the kind of benefit that you want. We have a great industry here, you should be looking at it. So fueling those jobs, absolutely. Housing, this is the other, we've got good news. The marketplace is, and we want to make sure that there's a supply of housing. And I heard yourselves the other day talk about, sure, let's meet the needs of those that want to come from across the country to Hamilton, but we also have to look after those that need affordable housing, as well as those that need the service support. So whether it be the population that's here now, and the other thing, which you know, I've talked about many times, is our seniors, that population, as big as it is right now, wait till you see in the next 15 to 20 years, the kinds of problems that we're going to be faced with if we don't start to get, you know, the housing mix right here in the city. We've got a great opportunity. The other thing that we've got a great opportunity though, is not just in terms of getting businesses, we actually have a menu of places where people can go. It's not just our waterfront. We have an airport now has a massive amount of land surrounded, urban boundaries moved, which we're going to service. We have other industrial parks, which aren't full just yet. So when you come to shop in Hamilton, you know, it's not just you've got options, you're going to have the service, obviously, that needs to be there to kind of deliver the kind of certainty that investors need. So these are some of the things that this council has very clearly directed and we are implementing, so that, you know, I mean, one of the ideas I know Neil talked about, and maybe Neil and Ron are contemplating going out west with the oil patch being in the position as it is, and all the high skilled trade guys that are out there and gals, maybe trying, you know, as the mayor of Calgary came here to, you know, poach some of our people, maybe it's time we go poach theirs. So I mean, we're looking at something like that as well. So everything we can do to fuel the economy, build a great city, as I said in the very beginning about the vision, you got to, you know, you got to make sure that you're offering people not just jobs, but a place to live that they want to be. And I'm telling you, with our transit aspirations, with our cycling, with our walking, our parks, you know, our museums, our symphonies, you know, all the things that, we are a metropolitan city in a very large economic region. So it's really ours to kind of, you know, to make happen, so.
Great answer, Chris. You've got a comprehensive handle on the big picture, and I want to, Mr. Deputy Mayor, just also emphasize the day-to-day service delivery, which you touched on as well. Somebody who may live in Oakville that wants to criticize us, that doesn't bother me at all, I can dismiss that. But for our old people, our own citizens, people who pay taxes here, have their homes here, their businesses here, have a stake in Hamilton, I want to, it may sound old-fashioned, and it's been a mantra I've said for years, but if I can do my darndest to provide value for the money and the property taxes they pay, and let them see the tangible results, I think that the overwhelming majority of our citizens, taxpayers, ratepayers, will be pleased and proud of their local government. Organizationally, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I know, Chris, we've had some blips, and we've had some blips recently, high-profile blips in a particular department, but as long as, and we're probably going to have a further in-depth discussion in camera in terms of the final outcome, but as long as we can hopefully avoid and not repeat, and always remind each of us that our salaries, wages and benefits in this uncertain economic world are paid for by our constituents and our citizens, and I mean that to the, right down to the frontline employees as well as the managers, if we are always mindful of that, I think we'll be better off and possibly avoid any kind of blips down the road. As long as organizationally, in a big organization like this, we can stay ahead and be as proactive as we can, I think we'll be better off. But excellent work, Chris. Thanks, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And along some of the same lines as councillor Collins, with respect to how lucky we are to have you as a city manager, I must say that publicly again, I believe you are the best city manager in Canada. Now, with respect to where we are today on a number of fronts, and I think we need to deal with the elephant in the room, and I think councillor Jackson alluded to it, but frankly, there are a number of issues surrounding this Public Works example that we need to really expand upon. Firstly, it was proactive, with our staff going out as a result of a number of frustrations that existed with respect to what was perception, which ultimately ended up becoming reality. This wasn't a gotcha scenario in any way, from a third-party independent source who said, look what we found the city doing. This was the city proactively going out, investigating and concluding that there was actual serious problems, and we took aggressive action. Can you just elaborate on that front?
Well, I mean, as you point out, I mean, there'll be specifics we'll talk about in camera, but how you just summarized it is exactly right. You know, as we've said before, the situation when the evidence was presented to senior management about what was happening, and what kinds of options we had, and what action we decided to take, I mean, you know, it's, the impact of it is felt beyond Public Works, it's felt right across the organization, to be quite honest. And yes, of course, the measures are exceptional, but the circumstance was exceptional. And we didn't go into this with the, you know, a sledgehammer approach by any stretch. I mean, we started with 29, we thought carefully about eight of the 29, about whether or not to continue down the path that we were, and we drew them back in, and we went forward with the 21. And so we'll get into a conversation about all of that, I'm sure. But, you know, what happened was 15 of the 21, at the end of the day, experienced something significant. There are six of them are not here, nine of them are coming back, you know, with, on probation, and those nine lost 27 months of pay, as you know, which is not a minor thing to them and their families. And so, and then the remainder are coming back as well. But, you know, if you run the organization from the standpoint, let's just focus on just, you know, the negative things. It's like I said to someone the other day, I mean, I'm lucky, I get to go home at night and have dinner with my family. And I don't start off with, you know, how did you guys screw up today? You know, I don't do that. You know, it's a terrible way to have a conversation with people that mean something to you. You know, and so it's about, you know, how was your day? It's like, I'm going to focus on the parts of the organization that are moving things ahead, that are being progressive, that are being innovative, that want to provide great service, and that is the vast majority, you know. And those that aren't clear, I am more than happy to help them be clear on what I expect of them. I mean, one of my directors said it very simply, actually, one of his staff told me this very simply. I said, what is it about your director that you like? He says, it's real simple. I'm clear on what he expects of me, he gives me the means by which to be successful, he has my back when it needs to be had, he stands behind me when I'm successful, and then finally, it's a great place to work. And you know what? That's a simple model. You don't have to read a lot of leadership books to realize that, you know what, that model's a good model. And so I'm focusing on those people that completely get it, and those that show up every day, which in, from a union, non-union perspective, is the vast majority, those that are going to choose to kind of do something. In this situation, there's a bit of both, I think, union and non-union that are clearly responsible for their circumstance. And I get that. And I'm telling you that the changes have happened, and the message, I think, is very clear across the organization, that something is significant, that this is just not going to be tolerated. You know, we're not going to go, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to kind of beat around the bush on it. We're going to deal with it the best way we can, and I think, you know, the result is the result. So, you know, I'm confident that it's got, the media's done a good job of bringing it to everyone's attention, and I think it forces us to look in the mirror and ask ourselves the question, as civil servants, proud civil servants, are we doing what we need to do? And I think in this particular case, you know, it was an extraordinary measure based on an extraordinary situation.
And more importantly, I think from this particular catalyst, and this is what I'll call it, how this can be implemented clear across the corporation, how it has been implemented, and how it's changed the way we do business, and what those efficiencies will show us to taxpayers in savings down the road. That is where I think we need to quantify where we're headed with this. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, my statement at the end of this presentation about communicating value for money, that's it. I mean, at the end of the day, people need to know that if my tax dollars are going into the organization, not just what services do I get for them, but are you any good at those services? And are people satisfied with those services? That's why I talked about the Citizens First IPSR results, saying that, you know, at least at 2014, we seem to be as good as anyone else in the, in the country. But that, I want us to be constantly communicating on the value for money, you know, that people, taxpayers get, and that is across our entire organization. And I think that's where you can, you know, and you know what? No only is it good for you and the citizens, it's actually great for us, because it gives us a sense of pride. Every time I'm in a room with a group of people that work here, I ask them, how many of you from Hamilton? And so I swear, 70 to 80% of the hands go up, they're all Hamiltonians. You know, and I'm going, we're experiencing something you haven't seen in a generation, and all your services matter. Let's do them incredibly well. This situation that you're referring to here is one of those situations where when it's presented to, you know, this organization is going to be taken seriously, leadership is going to learn from it, which it already has, in the frontline, very clearly, and like honestly, let's give them a lot of respect, because I mean, that's where it all happens, that's where service is delivered, and a lot of them are fantastic, whether they work in Public Works or any place else in the organization. I know it, because there was a point in time which I was that frontline unionized worker myself. So I know my attitude when I came to work then, and I know mine now, it's the same. So just because you're unionized doesn't mean that, you know, there's some different kind of code of conduct or practice that you have. You are committed to this city, and the vast majority of them are. And we know that, and the union executive gets it too. Trust me, you know, we are good people in good positions. We're going to have these instances. And I can tell you this too, in terms of the one-offs that occur when an individual does something that's just spectacular, like why would you do that? No amount of org chart changes are going to change, you know, the actions of an individual that chooses to do something really not smart, you know? I can't org our way around that one. If you choose to go out there and do something spectacular, you're on your own, and you will get it. I mean, there's no question. We are going to, and we're not going to dance around this, okay?
Which brings me to the next point, that 99%, in my opinion, of our employees are dedicated professionals who need to be applauded. And those are the ones that we need to protect by taking these types of steps, because like anything else, it's the actions of a few bad apples that takes everybody in a negative brush. And that's why this is so important. It's not so much about targeting the bad ones, it's about protecting the good ones that we have, and we have plenty of them. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the fact that we have now zero tolerance for a culture of low expectations, even though a judicial body felt that that was a justification to continue on, in looking at this scenario, I presume in the future now, that can't be used as a justification any longer, since we've taken such aggressive action. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, could you elaborate on the importance of that and the setting up a framework to address that, systemically throughout the corporation, not only in Public Works, but in the entire corporation itself?
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman. That's why a couple of years ago, we came together to say, wait a minute, you know, as, as proud civil servants, you know, let's put that pride into some specific language, and that's what grew the cultural pillars that we talked about, that I presented earlier. That's the expectation across the organization, that that's the kind of organization that we want to be. And so, again, I hire leadership that meets that expectation, I evaluate the performance of people based on that expectation, and so, you know, it doesn't matter where you are in the organization, the idea that, you know, that you show up every day and you get paid means you're going to do some good work, and that we want to communicate that. So if it, and I'm not saying, you know, if you think we've hit perfection right now, we have not hit perfection right now. I can assure you of that. But people that choose to kind of go in a different direction than where we want to go, in terms of, you know, demonstrating the culture every day, demonstrating the value for money, if they choose to go somewhere else with their ideas or their attitude, well then they will be held accountable. And when I say that, I don't mean just the frontline. I mean, you know, we've got examples here where, you know, in leadership, you know, certainly you can go up the ladder in leadership where behavior has not been accepted and things have happened. And so I'm not picking on anyone. I'm just basically saying, this is what we expect, and how is it that you're addressing it? And if you choose not to, you know what? I mean, I don't threaten people, I just follow through wherever I can on the things that I know we've said.
Councilor Marula, if I may, I appreciate certainly this presentation being on the city manager's performance appraisal, and appreciate your answers. Staying in that realm, I just want to make sure that we're trying to state that report as well.
Well, it's, it's, nothing within. And as a result of the public work scenario being a catalyst to the systemic, systemic plan of the city manager to ensure accountability and creating a culture of higher expectations, which all falls on the lap of the city manager, I will continue on. And on that front, I'd like to also bring forward a couple of key issues. One being that when you look at the difference between private and public sector, in the public sector, job security is never a question. You work for the city of Hamilton, no one's going to get laid off. No one's been laid off since I've been here. I don't recall any layoffs whatsoever as a result of economic downturn. However, in the private sector, people paying for our salaries, in the mid to late 2000s, were the ones paying our salaries, paying taxes, and getting laid off and seeing our employees with the job security. We took action during that term, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I can recall having put forward the 0% increases. And when you say our executive in the union understand it, they do understand it, because they agreed with us on a 0% increase, which was a precedent set clear across the province. So you're right about that. The good ones, the good employees and the executive understand this, and it's not about them, it's about the bad ones. So that also helped with the culture change as well. But we need, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to really emphasize the privilege it is to work for the city when you have job security, because nobody else has that. So can you elaborate, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the importance of that in communicating to our frontline staff and our management, that unlike the private citizen out there paying our salaries, they have that job security and a pretty good gig to boot, working for the city?
Mr. Murray, through your city manager's 2014 appraisal, please feel free to add some context.
Thank you, Chairman. As I pointed out at the very beginning of the presentation, I did come from the private sector, and I was there in the late 80s and early 90s, and I remember watching people, very good people that I worked with walked out the door because there just wasn't enough work. And so, you know, these were skilled engineers that, you know, despite getting paid a reasonable salary and some benefits, you know, they would lose their job because there wasn't demand. So, I mean, you know, to come into the public sector and, you know, with pensions and benefits and, you know, wages that are, you can certainly say fair, it's a privilege. It's a privilege to have that. And again, I will tell you that I would say the vast majority of people get that it's a privilege. We have in some respects a bit of a monopoly being government. I mean, there aren't other governments here in Hamilton that are competing. I mean, there's some nonprofits that can do similar sort of work, but, you know, we have not, you know, this isn't a council that does not outsource, generally speaking. They want to support the staff that they have, they want to support the unionized workforce. But again, you know, it's, you know, we're part of that 30, 40% of the population that retires and has pensions. There's a lot of people that work their whole life, work very hard and don't have a pension. So I can't emphasize enough, which is exactly what you're saying, Councilor Marula, is that, you know, with all those things considered, wages, benefits, pensions, and, you know, being asked to, you know, to do a job every day, and I mean, and it certainly, making sure that the people expect to do the job, that the message to them is clear what we expect of them, that's where management has certain role to play. You know what? I mean, it is, it's a, it's a, it's, we all know, it's a privilege and it's an honor to have these positions. And so with a privilege and honor, there's a responsibility. And so that is to do the job every day in a manner in which people would look and say we're proud of. That's why I go back to when I, when I talked about the mission, if we're going to be the best place in Canada to raise a child, why can't we be the best municipality? in Canada to raise a child, why can't we be the best municipality? And that means value for money, that means citizen satisfaction, and you know what, I don't think it's that much of a hail mary to suggest that in some measurable way, that we can't be that good. I think we're on the path, are we there? No, but I can say, this conversation and other conversations that we have at SMT and at EMTs, and how I communicate directly to people, and I'd be happy to kind of use this topic in another of the video clips to people, just what have we learned from all of this, whether you're in management or not, you know, to spell out the privilege that we have, being a public sector employee.
And I thank you, and in messaging that, in your capacity as city manager, is an important role in not only reminding people of their privilege, but also entrenching it within their day-to-day activity. And I think, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's important that we also recognize that the fear of consequence is tied directly into performance. So, in essence, if they feel that there is no consequence, there is no oversight, human behavior will dictate that you're not gonna get the best and the most out of that individual. And I think this catalyst has been set, or has been a catalyst towards setting that culture and increasing it, we're seeing it in the efficiencies already, and we want to continue seeing it aggressively throughout all the other departments, and I look forward to your continued implementation. And once again, I thank you, sir, for your incredible professionalism on a daily basis. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilor Marula. We now have Counselor Duvall.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, Chris. I appreciate all the work you do as our city manager, but listening to the last 10 minutes of talk going back and forth, I really have a different perspective, especially when it comes to some of our Public Works, and any other department out there, of how we handle things. So, the low expectation, the low culture that we had, fearing you didn't, you know, you just come in, and we kept using the frontline workers, but there was other many people, union and non-union involved. Some got little slaps, some didn't. You said we didn't come down with a sledgehammer as the investigation, and I don't know if 3D1 firing is not a sledgehammer, I don't know what you call that. But regardless of all that, what I guess what I'm asking, and I will ask you, is, did we learn anything from this investigation going forward, that when something like this happens, and knowing that it's just not happened to one or two people, it happens in five different yards, of the same reaction from everybody? And I'm talking supervisors, frontline employees, superintendents, do you feel that not putting the sledgehammer down there, could it be done a better way, a more efficient way of using discipline than a firing? Because when we get into it, a million dollars, well over a million dollars has been spent on this, and I'm not sure what we gained.
Just, I believe that we'll be going in camera and then having...
I understand we're going on camera on, because of personal names, it's gonna be mentioned, but this is, I'm not using anybody's name, the conversation started, and I'm...
Just as a reminder, I appreciate that, and it is in the context of a 2014 review, but I do believe when we come out of camera, we'll also be having a potential conversation around this as well, so...
Okay, if you want to wait till later, that's fine, but...
Your prerogative, Counselor. Your prerogative.
I would ask, I would like the city manager to ask, because this is a very expensive amount of money, of taxpayers' money, that was done.
Right, so, there's no question, through you, Chairman, to Counselor Duvall, so, the first part of your question was about, you know, what did we learn? And of course, this experience over the last couple of years is an experience that will shape the way in which, you know, we lead and we get the work done on the front line. So, to suggest that there isn't change going to happen as a result, I would say the change has already happened, the change has been happening. All of our leadership within Public Works go through something called the Cutting Edge of Leadership, and basically what it does is it trains people that are in leadership positions to do job well. So, that's been unfolding, and the take-up of that program, it's not voluntary, it's like you're required to do it, so that we're clear as senior management to the leadership in Public Works, what it is you're supposed to be doing. That kind of training, though, is now being rolled out across the organization, so we have a relationship with McMasters University, in fact, we're evolving a relationship online with Harvard, as well as Ivy, in terms of providing the kind of training that leaders need to be effective in their jobs. So, that is already underway. In terms of our frontline, you know, again, you know, the situation that we had, we started, as you know, with, I think we started ultimately with 31, but really, we started at 29. We looked carefully through all 29 individuals and the circumstances that they were a part of, and made a decision as to whether or not we need to carry or should be carrying that many people through this kind of action. And so, as you know, we pulled back on eight, believing that there were circumstances that may have led to them not being, not losing their job. We felt, based on all the information that we had, and the advice of those that are, you know, in BW, as well as HR, and all this, of course, comes to me, that we would move forward in the manner in which we did. How to do this more surgically? The fact that six people lost their jobs, the arbitrator, based on all the evidence that those six people should not be working for a variety of reasons for the city of Hamilton ever again, if we had gone surgically, I think is where you're kind of going, if we had taken and identified the ones that are, and I'll use Councilor Marula's term, "bad apples," I mean, we fire six people, you know and I know that we are in front of an arbitrator, and we're gonna be spending money to deal with those six people. You could argue that the other, the other 15 should have been given a suspension, you could say that. In some cases, you know, you would say the five that have been suspended are, that are coming back and are gonna get some amount of their salaries back, and I want to, in camera, talk about really how much money are they gonna get back, I don't want to get into specifics right now, but, you know, I think no matter how you slice and dice it, any kind of, any kind of penalty being imposed upon the other 15 would mean that we would be more than likely in front of our arbitrator, having to argue our actions there. And whether or not that would end up being mitigated to, you know, instead of a 30-day, a five-day, or 10-day suspension, I mean, that certainly, but we would have been consuming time and money, no matter how you look at it. I mean, at the end of the day, we believe, based on the information that we had at the time, and the discussions with our lawyer and HR, that we had just caused a move in the manner that we did. And I would say frankly, and respectfully, the, even though I don't fully agree with the arbitrator's decision, the fact is, is that 15 of the 21 did receive a very significant impact, nine are coming back of that 15, the other five or six, as you know, one of them the arbitrator's still withholding, or is gonna determine the actions later, you know, have, you might argue that we got it wrong in those cases, you know, and that's fair enough. You know, I look at it, if there's something more that we need to, you know, learn from this, then maybe we can have that conversation, and you can suggest to us what it is that we could have done differently or better. It just struck us that, you know, people showing up to work day after day and not working isn't acceptable, and quite frankly, regardless of what our rules are, all of us were brought up in a manner in which we understood a day's work for a day's pay, and there are lots of people that are culpable here, there's no question, but at the end, the action, we think, was thought through, and the result, as I say, is significant, and I don't fully agree with it, but have we learned as an organization? It'd be impossible not to.
Mr. Murray, I think, I believe some of this might be actually in the presentation that's forthcoming, and I do believe, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we are going to be going in closed session to discuss this particular matter, there will be a closed session presentation, also an open session presentation following that. Right now, what's before you is just the city manager's performance appraisal, but all this is coming as soon as we move into camera, and it will be coming in that order at the request of staff that we do the closed session and then the open session subsequent to that, because it will answer some of your questions as well.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I don't have no problem with that, I started it, I just wanted to put my field out there, but if we want to do it this way, that's fine with me, I have no problem.
If I can answer you, Chairman, I just thought, you know...
No, I appreciate it.
Well, what a wonderful day to have both my PA and this lady. I said, "Talk about your planning," so, or lack thereof, but in any event...
I do, I do have, I do have one question myself, I'd like to turn the chair over to Mayor Eisenberg. And just on through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Murray, on your slide around leadership, our people, you've identified talent management, corporate culture, communications, engagement, and performance accountability and development. I know in the jargon of management, Venn diagrams are forbidden, but I think that it is worth noting that there's some overlaps in these spheres. We reflect back on the alignment vision, which is, which is the space of being the best race of, well, it's right up here on the screen, innovation, engage citizens, and promote economic diversities. In the past, we've heard presentations from numerous people, we've heard commentary from all of our media regarding open data and open governance, in the terms of what that might look like, outward communicating to our community, kind of lock and step what our culture says, and I think we've done a great job with the first step of the new website, it's fantastic, I think it'll make for a much better portal for people to be able to navigate. What I'm wondering, you've mentioned two things, you mentioned your YouTube videos, which I think is great internally, you've also mentioned Toronto's culture of "no," and the feedback I'm getting from the community is there's still very much a culture of "no" when it comes to getting that information that will make these processes easier, open data, you know, you see crowd coding and all those things that are going on out there, and I'm just wondering where, in an imaginary Venn diagram of all your leadership spheres, we will find the space of open data and open government?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman, actually, it's in the strategic plan, I think that's where we were certainly told, now in certain terms, to go fix the website, and I think we're gonna be launching the next phase, major phase of that website very shortly, so you'll have finally a product that is much closer to your expectations. But I think as well, through that strategic planning exercise back four years ago, we were told to start to make advances in terms of open data, and I know Mike and his team have done that. I don't, can't recall right now how many data sets are accessible, we want to expand that more, we want to make, you know, changes not only on our website, to make data more accessible. In fact, we're starting to have conversations with the university about data in general, big data, and how best to use it. So, I would expect, and to your point, this term of council, it'd be, I think, really great to sit down with the members of this council and say to ourselves, 'cause my mindset right now is how much can we get done this term? So, on this topic, you know, what is possible this term in terms of advances on open data, and just the way in which that we are transparent government? What are, what are the expectations, and what is it that we can get done in the deadline that we have, which is the next three and a half years?
That's fantastic, I certainly look forward to that evolution of our bureaucracy and our own governance, and certainly thank you for everything that you've presented today. I will, before we go into camera, ask if there's any other speakers on the list, anybody else? First time, second time speakers, anybody? Make sure we've exhausted those lists. Okay, may I please have a motion to receive the presentation, item 7.1, "So Moved Enthusiastically by Counselor Connolly, Seconded by Mayor Fred Eisenberger." All those in favor, carried. All those opposed, reserve the same right. Thank you very much. I would now, given the time, I appreciate the patience of the folks that have been waiting, may I please have a motion to move into closed session respecting item 12.3, the discussion of the city manager's 2014 performance appraisal, section 12.4, which is a road arbitration update, section 12.5, which is a QP negotiation update, and section 126 of the Labor Disruption Contingency Plan, pursuant to section 8.1, subsections B, D, E, and F of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300, and section 239, subsection 2, subsections B, D, E, and F of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended. As the subject matters pertain to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including city employees, labor relations, or identifiable, sorry, litigation and potential litigation, including matters before the administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessaries for that purpose. Could I now ask that the, oh, we need the motion, we're moving first. Moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Connolly, all those in favor, carried. Thank you very much. Now, could I ask the public and staff who are not...